All right, welcome everybody to our December 15th council meeting. If you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Perfect, thank you everyone for joining us this evening. We have almost a full council. Councilmember Agnew is absent and excused this evening. We have a couple things we're going to jump into. One is a special presentation, but before I do so, Councilmember Sandberg, last week I expressed frustration and I think it was during the public comments section and said that I wasn't interested in your opinion and one of the, on, you shared your opinion on one of the speakers. And for that I apologize, everybody's opinion up here is important, so hopefully you'll accept my apology.
I do, thank you.
Thank you very much. So tonight is a night of celebration. We have two council members that get to go out and, and look back on their time here in the city and celebrate their time here, and I know that many are here to celebrate with us. So I'm going to start with Councilmember Evans, and then at the end of it, if you have a few words that you might want to share, I'd certainly invite you to do so. But Councilmember Bill Evans was elected to City Council on 2000, in 2008 and has served the city for a total of eight years from 2008 to today, 2015. He has served on numerous committees, including the Economic Development Committee, the Human Services Committee, the Regional Fire Authority Planning Committee, the Popkinney Master Planning Policy Group, the North Shore Parks and Recreation Service Area Board, as well as the Capital Facilities Commission, and a Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. I certainly appreciate your service here to the city and we'll be able to share some cake here together and experience a few stories or hear a few stories, so invite you to have the opportunity to maybe say goodbye or whatever is on your heart or on your mind.
Well, this is one topic I have not prepared for tonight, so I don't have a lot of words, but I can just say that I really have enjoyed serving in the city for the past eight years. I think we've accomplished a lot of good things and I found out real early, it's, it's hard to make everybody happy and make everything perfect for everyone, but I think it's a council, we've really tried to listen to the public and we've tried to do things that improve our community, and I, and I believe we've done that. I've been in Bothell since the early 70s, and I really liked Bothell back in the early 70s when things were, there was occasional couple of streetlights and other than that it was pretty wide open, so I liked those times, but I realize that, that change is coming and I think change is good for us overall. It's the growing pains and things, but I think, I think we're, we're headed in the right direction and, and we have a great city. And I guess, just in conclusion, I want to thank the other council members here, I've enjoyed serving with all of you and appreciate your comments and thoughts and things, and maybe our paths will cross again in the future. And I'd also like to say to the staff that I, I think we have a, a great staff in, in the city. I'm a little biased, having been a public servant myself and worked in the public service for 30 years, so I, I know that these people put in a lot of time and a lot of hours and a lot of things go unnoticed about what they do, but I really do believe their hearts are in it and we're, we're fortunate to have the staff we have. So again, thank you for letting me serve in, in this community, I've enjoyed it and look forward to, to seeing all of you again in the future here. Thank you.[298.12][298.12](applause)
I could say each week I was very impressed. Many of us have mechanical devices up here, Bill and I are paper folks, but I can look over and certainly see that you thoroughly, well, whenever you speak, we know that you've thoroughly gone through the packet and had a lot of thought, but I can see your papers riddled with notes, so your contribution to the city with just helping make sure that each item that comes forward is thoroughly reviewed, I appreciate that. I know other council members obviously do that as well, but I can visually see that. I also see Margot here. Margot, thank you so much for all the time that you've given up, your husband, we certainly appreciate him and his heart for the city, and I know he dearly loves you and is looking forward to spend a lot more time with you and your kids and grandkids, so God bless you and all the time that you've given as well. Thank you. Yeah, I agree Jaclyn, thank you.[350.00][350.00](applause) So Mark Lamb, Councilmember Mark Lamb was elected to the City Council on, in 2004 and served a total of 12 years from 2004 to 2015. He also served as mayor for four terms from 2006 to 2013. His numerous committee assignments include the King County Jail Assembly, Snohomish County Health District, the Economic Development Committee, Public Safety Committee, Community Outreach Committee, and as a member of the Business Development Center Advisory Board for UDA Bothell. As Mayor Merck, served on various mayor committees, including the King County Mayors Committee, the North End Mayors Committee, and the South Snohomish County Mayors Committee. Mark, appreciate your service to the city, thank you so much for all the time that you've given and thought that you have as well. You want to share a few words?
Hey Jaclyn, thank you so much Josh, I really appreciate that. For the past few weeks I've been thinking about the progress that our city has made over the past 12 years. Many of you have written to me and called to say thank you and to wish me and my family well, and I and we sincerely appreciate that. I have genuinely loved serving our city on this council and serving as your mayor as I did for eight years. I want to thank my friends on this council for the honor you conferred upon me for eight years to serve as mayor, and I want to thank my neighbors in Bothell for electing me three times to this council. For the past 10 years, we've sort of rediscovered the spirit that started our city over a century ago. Not a closed off and fearful spirit, but a pioneering and welcoming spirit as a community. Bothell's past is really, really remarkable. The progress that we've seen in our community has been so profound, sometimes it can be easily overlooked. A hundred years ago, a steamboat trip from Seattle's Madrona neighborhood to Issaquah took 14 hours with a meal stop right here in Bothell. Our city was formed as a community by welcoming weary travelers to come and eat here in our fine restaurants, and today Alexis, McMinimans, and John Howey continue that century-old tradition of hospitality. That, I think, is the very best in the spirit of Bothell, which is treating visitors and new neighbors who've only been here for a day as if they are as welcome and as valued a member of our community as someone who has spent a lifetime here. There's a reason that we're seeing so many new neighbors in Bothell and so many new businesses, and that's because Bothell is back. We see this in the flourishing of the University of Washington Bothell into one of the fastest-growing and most respected campuses in the nation. Only a very few short years ago, its existence was threatened, but working together as a community, we fought for needed funding from the state and saved the campus that is now the pride of our community. We see this in the opening of especially grocers, a movie theater, new restaurants and businesses. We see this in the preservation of the Anderson Building and the North Shore Pool and their transformation into a gathering place for our community. We see this in the ambitious expansion of the Park at Bothell Landing, our city's historic gathering place, along with the Crossroads Project and Boulevard. These much-needed road improvements not only protect our community from cut-through traffic, but recently won awards for doing so in an environmentally responsible and sustainable way. We also see this in difficult 100-year decisions made and executed on successfully in just the past five years. This new city hall, our energy-efficient public works facility, the daylighting of Horse Creek, and the preservation of the North Creek Forest. Generations to come will benefit from our willingness to persevere through disagreement and advance the common good. No city in the region has changed as much for the better in the past decade. It's easy to forget that we did all of this and more in the worst economic downturn since the Great Depression. Together, Bothell accomplished the very best of things in the very worst of times. As mayor, and during my time as mayor, you get a very unique lens on the city, because people write to you and share their lives, they point out things that they want you to know, or that they believe that the city has overlooked, like their garbage pickup or snowplows. I will miss being able to learn through those messages of the small acts of kindness, compassion, grace, and bravery that the men and women who serve our city display on a regular basis. It has been a genuine pleasure and an honor to serve with you. My family is here tonight, and when I was first elected, my beautiful daughter Jaclyn was only three months old. My son Walker was born, hey there, my son Walker was born four months after I was sworn in as mayor. I want to thank my wife Kimberly for her grace and for her beautiful strength, and when I was first sworn in 12 years ago, my son Lars was really, really bored by my speech. And he kept saying, "My turn, my turn." And I'm reminded of his words tonight, because in the new year, it will again be somebody else's turn. I look forward to seeing how the next chapter in Bothell's bright future plays out, and may God bless our city as richly in the next 100 years as he has in our first 100. Thank you.[675.94][675.94](applause)
Thank you very much Mark for your eloquent words, I appreciate it, and it has been a pleasure serving with you, and your impact on the city is positive and one that you can look back on with pride. So I have the honor of presenting two plaques, so I'd like to call the families up to front here, we could take a couple pictures together, and then as a group, community, we're going to celebrate and have some cake outside, so we'll take some pictures down here and invite you to enjoy some cake with us, and we'll be adjourned for 30 minutes.
All council members, please return to the dais. The next meeting is about to start.
All right. Thank you. So just 10 seconds here. Welcome back, everybody, to the Bothell City Council meeting for December 15th. We just had a nice reception and enjoying some cake and conversation. So getting back to the items on our agenda, hopefully, everybody's had a chance to look at tonight's agenda and any additions, subtractions, or otherwise. Councilmember Sandberg?
We received a memo from our city manager on December 10th regarding lobbying services, and I was hoping we could add a discussion of that to the end of the meeting tonight.
Let's do it right before the executive session, so we will have an executive session tonight for litigation. So we'll probably end the meeting in there, I'd imagine. So discussion on the memo that we received. City manager, are you ready to discuss the memo?
Certainly, I wasn't anticipating discussing the memorandum, but I can discuss it with council at your desire.
Okay. Great. Anything else? Councilmember Sandberg?
I wanted to pull two items from the consent agenda.
Okay.
15-188, which is the approval of the supplemental agreement with KNL Gates for legal services, and 189, consider approval of the revised 2016 property tax ordinance language.
Okay. Perfect. Thanks. Those are your pull. Anything else on tonight's agenda? Anyone? How about the projected agenda? Councilmember Raym?
So on our January 5th meeting, I just wanted to make sure I understood, because people wanted to come to the swearing-in part of the, and the reception part of the meeting, and it looks like it's fourth on the list, and I just wanted to make sure if that is the case or not, or is it at the beginning of the meeting?
It'll be at the beginning of the meeting. It's simply listed number four on the projected agenda.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Similar to tonight, it'll be at the front end of the meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Anything else? No? All right. So we have our, oh, interesting.
I moved the consent other than the items that were pulled.
I don't have a visitors section written on here this evening. Why do I not see it on my paper form? Oh, there we go. It's on the unusual third page. All right. So we have a motion by councilmember Lamb, second by councilmember or Deputy Mayor Spivey. If everybody, we're actually going to do voice vote again tonight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. So the first item that was pulled was 15-188 by councilmember Sandberg.
So I just wanted to pull it for a moment, a brief discussion. This is a, an amendment to our professional services agreement in the amount of $225,000 for ongoing legal services related to downtown revitalization. And in the history, when I added up all of the costs that we've paid so far to KNL Gates for legal services, it's pretty daunting. It's $1.8 million that we've paid since 2007 in, in trying to, trying to advance downtown revitalization, which includes things like the Horse Creek Project, environmental cleanup, and selling of downtown properties. And then the memo that the city manager sent on December 10th, it seems as though we may have difficulty in acquiring funds from the Department of Ecology to do cleanup on existing properties. So one point is, I had, I never thought, when we embarked on downtown revitalization, that we'd be paying as much money as we have in legal services to make this happen, because this agreement will put us over $2 million spent on, on legal fees for this area. So I think that's just an important piece of information for the public to understand. And then I, I'd like to know, because we have environmental cleanup as a necessity moving forward, what, what happens if we don't renew this contract? What are we, what are we missing out on if we don't renew this contract? What other additional work has not been done that still needs to be accomplished?
Well, we have a remaining environmental remediation that takes place. When you look at the almost $2 million, as you state, that's reflective of over $150 million worth of infrastructure work the city has performed. Much of that was in right-of-way negotiations, environmental remediation, crossroads project. And so the work that is still to exist, that will utilize KNL Gates services for, are the remaining purchase and sale agreements as we execute those. And recall that we, this last year, we received over $90,000 in support of those efforts. And so any future purchase and sale agreements that have not yet collected the negotiation opportunity fee of $15,000 will be used to mitigate and offset those legal expenses. We anticipate we'd still have some Horse Creek environmental advice. Our negotiations likely to provide Bothell Service Center. Multway Boulevard was also accomplished this last year, but I don't believe we have any additional expenses that we're anticipating for legal services. But I suspect that it'd be, going forward, it'll simply be the cross, will be the Horse Creek, and then Main Street Extension, and the rest of the infrastructure investments that have not yet been made. And so you should be seeing KNL Gates contracts starting to wind down as all the development on the remaining lots and all of our infrastructure investments are taking place.
So if your concerns in the December 10th memo come to bear, in that we, the city does not receive MACHDA funds to do environmental cleanup, which then becomes the priority? Dedicating money to doing environmental cleanup to replace the MACHDA funds that we don't get, or paying for legal services?
Well, they're both a priority. Legal services in the amount of $225,000 doesn't necessarily compare to the nearly $6 million of MACHDA funds that we need to perform the remaining environmental cleanup.
True, but if we, if we need to start allocating resources at some point, I mean, we have to start saving our money for that environmental, that environmental cleanup should the MACHDA funds not come through.
I don't think it's a choice of one or the other. I think it's something that you have to do in tandem with, with each other.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else on this matter? Question. Councilmember Lamb?
City manager, how much money do you think we achieved approximately in grants, both for the crossroads and downtown, in terms of environmental cleanup, that were aided by the services that KNL Gates provided?
I think in our past CFPs, when we look at all of the sort of OPM or other people's money, state or federal sources, it's roughly probably two-thirds of that expense is someone else's funds or not directly the city of Bothell's funds. And then one-third of those funds are directly from Bothell's one-time revenue sources. And if the finance director has a different number, but that's the number that I recall, rough amounts from our capital facility plan discussions.
And is it your opinion that we, as a city, could do, could sort of do without legal counsel in these matters, that we sort of could have freelanced with that and not consulted with an attorney?
No. We could not have done that. KNL Gates certainly is an expensive law firm, but they're also a very qualified law firm dealing with some, as we were dealing with some very complicated environmental matters and negotiations, and we received some excellent environmental advice that I think has likely saved us money over the long term.
Okay. Thanks a lot.
Great. Any other questions? Councilmember Evans?
Is, is this an amount not to exceed the 225,000? Is that reasonable to assume that, obviously, the council's given authority to this amount, but it wouldn't exceed this amount without coming back with additional council authority?
That is correct. And each year, we've brought these to you as a, as an annual estimate of what we anticipate to spend for legal services.
And as councilmember Sandberg mentioned, depending on what goes on here in the next few months and that type of thing, some of these, these funds are obviously dependent on projects proceeding. If they don't proceed, then these funds, proportion of them, or whatever is allocated will not be spent. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Move the recommended action.
We have a motion by councilmember Lamb and a second by councilmember Evans. Any discussion? All right. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next item that was pulled was 15-189 by councilmember Sandberg.
So I, I pulled this because I voted against this when we heard it in November 24th, and I, I didn't want to be on record, even if it was through a consent item, to be supporting that, supporting this. This is a, this was our 1% property tax increase that was approved by council, and I guess we needed to change the language to clarify the absolute amount of what the 1% levy increase amounted to, which was $107,683. And I think it's always important to put the money that we're spending in context with something, so that we know, you know, what does that mean? Is that just a drop in the bucket? Or is it meaningless, or is it meaningful? And I compare that, for example, to the cost that we're incurring in, in appealing the Growth Management Hearing Board decision, which is, coincidentally enough, about $100,000. So I just wanted to be on record tonight that I oppose the 1% property increase, and that's why I pulled it off of consent.
So I also voted with you not for the property tax increase. I did ask clarification from our finance director, as well as our city attorney. By voting for this tonight, we're not voting for a property tax increase. It's a clarification in language. If it was a vote for a property tax increase, there would be a public hearing. That vote has already taken place. So our conscience could be clear if we do vote in favor of this language change, for those of you who are, those of us who are concerned about increases in property tax. So any other conversation in this regard?
Move the recommended action.
We have a motion by councilmember Lamb and a second by councilmember Evans. Any discussion? All right. Seeing none, if all place their vote, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Nay. Passes four to two. Next item is actually your visitors section. So this is an opportunity for visitors that are here with us today to address counsel on matters that are important to them, on city-related matters, for three minutes. I only have two sign-ups tonight, but it looks like we have a few people here in the audience. So if you didn't have a chance to grab these signup sheets, they're in the back as you walk in. We'll start off with Mr. Gene Greif, a familiar face and a friend of Bothell. Mr. Greif?
My name is Gene Greby, and I'm a retired professional engineer, and I have been active in South Snohomish County growth for many years. I am a citizen of Snohomish County, living in Bothell's municipal urban growth area, known as the Booga, and I'm in District Four. And I have one council member representing me and around 700,000 people. It's a tough job. And the executive who leads a regional government of, again, tens of thousands of people. With that in mind, I was involved in an attempt to annex over 20,000 people in the city of Bothell, contained in Snohomish County, as did the city and the citizens did in 1992 by assessed valuation petition, as opposed to election. A competing city concept, as led by State Representative Schmidt, was rejected by the BRB, and a revised plan rejected later by election. So the, the city of North Creek failed. The retiring Planning and Development Director, Bill Weislogo, who I got to know over the years, played an important role in all our actions. And I did speak with the new planning director, Tom Burdette, but there are lessons learned. I'm submitting a summary of events as a form of an unauthorized corporate knowledge as related to the Northeast Bothell annexation, or known as NUBA, as organized by a great group of South County, South Snohomish County citizens. The election losses of the, of the annexation proposed elections, of those two, was a vicious action between citizens and special interests. Lessons learned may be useful in some future Lessons learned may be useful in some future action by citizens in the future. Bothell annexation into Stonewish County was a perfect storm of community action and as example of Woodenville for annexation. I wish the best of luck to Bill Evans and Mark Lamb for, they are working for regional progress. I hope we will have representation because these two gentlemen, I think, reside in Stonewish County. So I hope we have a vision for our South County, Stonewish County as cooperating with the City of Bothell. And with that in mind, again, I wish the, Bothell is a powerhouse of revenue and citizen action and by the vision that you have here in McMinimans. In fact, I am welcome to swim free in the pool because I am a resident of your Booga. So I have these comments, prepared copies to distribute as a sort of a corporate history. So again, particularly congratulations to both you, both Mark and Bill. Thank you.
Mr. Greavy, thanks so much for your continued community leadership. I can tell you that as a council, we are very interested in the Canyon Park area and really looking at what we can do to stimulate that area continually, kind of like what we've been focusing on downtown Bothell on the King County side. I think it's right to really take a in-depth look there.
Powerhouse of revenue, and we provide a lot of housing surrounding Canyon Park.
Absolutely. Completely agree. Thank you, sir. Next on the signup sheet is Mr. Bob Covey. I know I saw you at the reception. Oh, there we are. Nice to see you, sir.
Thank you. My name is Bob Covey, and I live at 9544 Northeast 28th Street, just south of the Swedish Crest Apartment Project property. For the past two weeks, I've learned how fast three minutes goes, and I've shared my disappointment due to the lack of responsiveness from city council and staff. I'm here tonight to share my progress of the last week. Last Friday, four West Hill neighbors attended a meeting with four folks from Community Development along with City Council Member Tris Sandberg and two folks from the Harbor Homes Swedish Crest Development. We identified two non-compliance issues the city will be working on to improve. Director Tom Burdette assured me that he has given direction to his staff to review their process flow diagrams and make recommendations for change. He will communicate reconciliation as identified via email. And Tom, I will hold you to that promise. And also, I want to say this was a very positive meeting. I, it was goodness. Tom also directed us to contact Barbara Ramey, Public Information Officer, for reaching out to neighborhoods via social media. I'm a member of West Hill Next Door, which is one of 30 neighborhood private social networks covering the City of Bothell. Currently, the Bothell Police Department is testing this type of access to our neighborhood communities. I believe it has applications also for community develop and city council possibly. I have a meeting scheduled at eight o'clock on Friday with Captain Bob Wolverton in his office. The first topic will be the speed concerns that we have in the West Hill area and also figure out ways that we can slow the folks in our neighborhood down. The second topic will be the expected parking sharp falls from the Swedish Crest project. In closing, one of the things that is most troubling with my, myself and my wife over this journey is, is that it's caused us to question our city's leadership on whether we're working together and, and the many other projects that are going on in the city. 67% of Bothell citizens believe the city is doing a poor job of dealing with traffic, but the development projects keep on coming and being approved. It seems build it and they will come is the present focus of Bothell's decision makers. What is being missed is they will also come with their one and a half cars and their two children, thus causing the traffic jams and school overcrowding we're experiencing today. And in closing, as I stated last week, what I need from city councils are very simple. Please be an advocate for the collective spirit of those who live and work within our community. Quality of life matters, and I look forward to being part of the solution.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. I don't have any other signup sheets. Is there anyone else who wishes to address council this evening? Just maybe Ms. Gwynn, if you want to come forward and then after you can come up.
Good evening. I do have a question before I start speaking, so please don't put the time on yet. I do want to speak during the public hearing for the UW Cascadia. Would this be counted towards my time if I talk now on a different topic?
If you talk on a different topic, no, it would not.
Okay. You can start. I wanted to take this opportunity. I served 12 years on city council and eight years with Mayor Mark Lamb. And I can't remember how many years with Councilmember Evans. I believe four. But I thought of some things I'd like to say, and I focused on since I only have three minutes, to only talk about things that I don't think people knew what you voted for and how you supported me. So I came down with about four items that I don't think I would have passed the legislation without your support. And it's interesting listening to the previous speaker talking about traffic calming. Without your support, we would not have a citywide funded traffic calming program during the time that it was on council. And it involved the approach, instead of pitting neighborhood against neighborhood, it was all the affected areas would have to come together and vote on the solution, and only then would it pass. And the first test case was up on West Hill, and two neighborhoods that used to have a few disagreements on where the traffic should go came together and voted for it. Unfortunately, the traffic calming program hasn't been funded as well in recent years, and I hope the city does get more money to do that. We had very low funding for human services. And we really increased that because there are citizens in Bothell that need our help, need a helping hand, and that's what we provided. You also gave me support for federal funding to do a letter regarding the support of AIDS. And that was a long-fought battle on the council dais that night. And the last one, my last year on council, I got as a goal, one of the top goals for the city was acquisition of open space. And through that, we were able to connect with the neighborhood, connect with King County Council Member Larry Phillips, and received the first grant that saved the North Creek Forest, the beginning of it. And the citizens took the rest of it and ran with it and hopefully saved it. So thank you for your support. Without that, those things would not have happened.
Wow. Thank you, Sandy. Ms. Bellacy? Is there anyone else after Mrs. Bellacy? I don't see any hands. Anyone else? Okay.
My name is Patty Bellacy. I live at 2614 242nd Street. There are several items I would like to comment on. I want to congratulate the recently elected and re-elected members of the city council, Andy Rayum, Davina Doer, and James McNeil. I'm very happy to see them coming aboard. Considering the large margin of votes between each of the above candidates and their opponents, I believe the citizens of Bothell are sending a message. They are tired of Bothell being in the news for the wrong reasons, the latest being the article in the Seattle Times on Thanksgiving Day and the editorial on December 12th. They are tired of unethical behavior by certain council members who still do not see a problem voting on issues that might potentially provide them with a personal profit. Item number two, the majority of the council got their $50 million city hall. While attending this city hall official opening, I noticed an abundance of space on the third and fourth floors. Is there any reason why we can't rent the fourth floor out for some time, for the time being, to try to get back a small portion of the excessive amount of money we have spending on this building? There seems to be plenty of room on the third floor for the three or four people now residing on the fourth floor. Also, it seems to be a waste of electricity, heating, and custodial services to use the fourth floor. Item number three, I watched last week's November 24th city council meeting. I was appalled at the amount of time it has taken to respond to Mr. Moritz's public records request. It shouldn't take four to five months to respond to almost any request. How do I know this? I worked at the Capital Projects Office at the UW for eight years. My office was responsible for all public records requests, and we received quite a lot, many from companies or lawyers who wanted to sue us, so we had to check them very carefully. Our responses were all reviewed by a lawyer, and we were expected to respond within two weeks unless it required a huge amount of research. One thing I noticed on Mr. Moritz's request was the salary for the city manager. When I checked my salary for 28 years, I called the payroll office and they gave me the information in five minutes. They were able to call it up. I would think they'd be able to do that here. Mr. Moritz's request seems to relate to a reasonable amount of data. I don't know why the city staff is stalling, and I don't know why the council is allowing And I was going to comment on an inappropriate comment during the last meeting, but Mr. Freed apologized for that, which I applaud you. I wish he had done it for the other times when you've spoken inappropriately during the visitor's section. And last but not least, I know the majority of the new city council will do their best to serve the citizens of Bothell and not just themselves. I look forward to their leadership.
Oh, just in time. Just in time. Thank you. I didn't see any other hands. Is that correct? Great. Thank you so much for comments this evening. I appreciate it. We'll move, still beeping, still going. At least it's quieter. Remember the first night when it went off? First item, I guess, in regards to city-related items and ordinances is AB 15-190 to consider adoption of ordinance establishing and clarifying procedures for calculating sanitary sewer rates. So our director, Erin, is here.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Erin Lenhart's Public Works Director. I'm standing in for Don Feen, who is on vacation. And just a quick housekeeping amendment to our current municipal code related to sewer rates. At the end of last year, you adopted new volumetric sewer rates for single-family residential customers. And what it does is it uses winter water use to determine what your sewer rate is going to be. There are certain circumstances where we don't have that information available to us. So the code amendments before you tonight would, would codify some policies that we've established for situations such as new homes, newly constructed homes, changes in property ownership, changes in tenancy, and then non-water customers. We do have certain sewer service area that we don't serve water as well, so we don't have that consumption information. So that's the extent of my presentation, and I will answer any questions you have.
Great. Thank you, Erin. Any questions? Councilmember Sandberg?
Well, since we have a lot of people in the audience, and I know I've gotten a lot of feedback from residents about their utility bills, and I did recently just get some, a feedback about their sewer bill. Can you take just a moment to, to describe that? Because I think people are starting to get their bills now, and they're starting to pay a little bit more attention. And I think it's interesting that your sewer rate is based on your winter water usage, your water usage.
Right.
And the logic behind that.
So the, the logic behind it is to be more fair. We have households that have, you know, two, two-person households that historically, if you're a single-family customer, your sewer rate is the same as a household of eight people. So the, the use of the system is much more when you have higher water use, since that's where your, your water goes when you use it for the most part. And the reason we use water in the, water usage in the winter is because that eliminates all of the yard watering and that sort of thing that happens during the summer. When we don't have that information available to us, our proposal is to use the average usage. So it would essentially, for those that we don't have the winter consumption information, we would essentially be charging a similar rate to what we were before, more of an average across the customer base.
Okay. Mr. Rayum?
So how many sewer, excuse me, how many sewer accounts does this impact, this ordinance change?
So unfortunately, I don't know exactly how many. We haven't been able to get that information. But what I'm trying to show you on this overhead is that the yellow area is the, is the Bothell Service Area. So down here on the bottom, this area here, as well as this area here, are the primary areas that we do not serve water, but we do provide sewer service.
So the dash line then is where we have the water systems different? I guess I don't understand the map.
Yeah. Let's see. Is there a way to, to get, I don't know. Yeah. Thank you, Carrie. Thank you. Thank you, Carrie. I think that's good. So on the, on the map above, you'll see the purple area, and then down below where it's yellow, this is North Shore's water service area, the purple is, and the yellow is Bothell's service area. So there are two primary areas that we don't serve water, but we provide sewer.
So it's just in those areas that this ordinance would affect? Because it seems like any new properties citywide, right?
Right, right.
Would be affected by this and changes in property ownership?
And those are just until we have the winter water usage. Okay. That we charge those. It's the, the ongoing issue is the folks who don't, aren't served water from the city as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else? Councilmember Sandberg?
So do, so we, we are unable to get water usage information from the other utility districts to provide a more accurate assessment of their actual sewer usage? Because it seems to me that if you're, if you're served by sewer but not by water in comparison to somebody else who is served by both and therefore has more accurate data, is there an issue of equity there? Or do we, can we get the data from the, like, for example, North Shore Utility District? Or is that just too involved?
It's my understanding that the Finance Department did attempt to do so, and the information, one of the problems was the, their winter season, their bills don't line up with Bothell's. So that was problematic. We can definitely take a look at it and see if in next year, if during the rate process, if we can find a, figure out a better way to capture the non, non-Bothell water customers' usage.
Okay, thanks.
Great. Others? No? Councilmember Evans or Lamb? Great. Well, anybody want to move the recommended action?
Still moved.
Councilmember Lamb makes a motion. Councilmember Evans, second. Any discussion?
Seeing none, all in favor of the recommended action, which is consider adoption of the proposed ordinance establishing and clarifying procedures for calculating user rates for sanitary sewer services. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next on our agenda is a study session, which is AB 191. This is a public hearing regarding a plan and code amendments to retire the University of Washington Bothell Cascadia Planned Unit Development and amend the campus and amend the campus district boundary and regulations. So our public hearing is open.
Can I make a comment? Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say at the beginning, there was some email traffic around this issue suggesting that a decision would be made on this tonight. That is not the case. This is going to be continued at the end of tonight to the new year. So this is an opportunity for us to take public comment, to weigh in. But there's no final decision, so I don't know if anyone wanted to testify tonight, that we could clarify that at the beginning, because I received a couple of emails that some people might not have understood that. So I just wanted to get that out on the record to begin with.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Gary Hassler, Planning Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. Tonight is, as the mayor has already said, plan and code amendments for the University of Washington Bothell Cascadia College Planned Unit Development. I have a very brief presentation for you. I know the time is short tonight, so I'll just summarize essentially what is in your packet that is new from the study session. City Council held a study session on this item on November 24th and had a number of questions for staff and the consultant. Responses to those questions have been included as Attachment 1 in the Agenda Bill. Also included in the packet are proposed draft language to retire PUDs. That goes for BMC 11.04 and 12.30. Also included is a diagram of the campus master plan, a table showing all campus PUD conditions since the campus's inception, and diagrams showing campus setback requirements, both existing and proposed. We tried to respond to all of the questions that Council had at the study session. If we missed anything, please let us know. An inter-local agreement between the city and the institutions is currently being drafted, and that would memorialize any PUD conditions that need to be carried forward, as we mentioned in the study session. And that is currently being drafted partly because it's a lengthy process, there's a lot to include, and it's partly dependent upon council direction. I wanted to let the council know that the UW Bothell and Cascadia College held an open house on Monday, December 7th, to provide information to the public and solicit feedback from the neighborhood. Approximately 27 citizens attended that open house, as well as the institution's consultant and city staff. So the process for the public hearing tonight that we were anticipating is to take public testimony. And I'd like to let you know that representatives of the UW Bothell and Cascadia are here, and they would like to speak to you as well. And then we'd be glad to answer any questions you might still have, and then anticipating council deliberations and direction to staff. And finally, a motion to continue the hearing to January 19th, 2016. On hand with me tonight is the institution's consultant, OTAC. And as I said, we'd be glad to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
So will we be hearing from the university in Cascadia right now?
I think that's the normal procedure, is to have the applicant address you first and then take public comment.
Perfect. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Megan Walker. I am the Executive Director of College Relations at Cascadia College. Clerk, do you need my address for any reason? No. Okay. Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you very much for giving us this opportunity to speak with you. I am here on behalf of both Cascadia College and University of Washington Bothell. And we are very pleased to be able to join the city of Bothell in requesting the retirement of the campus PUD. University of Washington Bothell and Cascadia have reputations for providing the highest quality college education for our students who come to us from all over the state and the region, but primarily from King County and Snohomish County. Like other public higher education institutions, we have been beset by a decade of state budget cuts. The PUD retirement would allow us to use our limited funds to directly benefit our students rather than spending them on the administrative process of getting facilities permitted to the tune of a quarter million dollars a pop. In addition to providing quality education, it is critically important to us, to both institutions, to be assets to our community and to our economy while simultaneously being responsive and caring neighbors. We believe we can achieve all of these goals with the parameters established through the proposed PUD retirement. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Is that the extent of your presentation?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to offer the opportunity for folks that have signed up, I have 11 so far, there may be more, that wish to ask questions this evening. But first, I have Mr. Norm Wright, and I already have your address for the record.
Great. Thank you very much. My name's Norm Wright, and I, first of all, just want to say thank you to Councilmember Evans and Lamb for your service. It's very much appreciated. The Sunrise Valley View neighborhood needs the city council support once again. The city and city council has helped us a couple of years ago to help create a residential parking zone when our neighborhood was overrun with parking overflow from the campus community. I'm happy to report that parking is not an issue in our neighborhood anymore, and so thank you for that. However, now my neighborhood is facing another challenge, and that has the potential to significantly impact the portions of our neighborhood bordering the campus community. The original campus PUD provides development setbacks that minimize impacts on the residential neighbors. I'm asking if the city hold the campus community to these standards and maintain those setbacks. The UW Bothell and Cascadia College do provide amazing educational opportunities for students. The housing and residential life provides certainly an additional opportunity for learning for those students. I'm not opposed to that. I actually think it's a great thing, because I used to live in housing when I was in college. I also worked professionally for four years in residence life and housing. I also recall residence halls can be very noisy places. Okay? So I support the housing on campus. I do not support it located within 30 feet of a residential neighborhood. There are several locations to construct housing on campus that will have much less impact on the Sunrise Valley View neighborhoods. The students will not know the difference if the residence hall is located farther away from the campus borders. In fact, it may be to their benefit if the neighborhood is not always calling campus security and city police about noise complaints. In closing, I'm requesting that the city retain the setback standards as listed in the PUD. Maintaining those PUD setbacks will not prevent campus from future development, yet will hold the campus to the standards and expectations as agreed upon by the campus and the city when it was created. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Appreciate your comments. Next is Janelle Lowen. Please, everyone feel free to correct me when I say your name wrong. I believe it's Janelle Lowen.
Yes, my name is Janelle Lowen. My address is already written, I think. I want to say I concur with Norm and agree with everything he said. If the UW has its way and Bothell allows the retirement of the PUD regulations, it will ruin the magnificent 200-foot upland cluster of firs and pond that borders 183rd Court and 182nd Court. The whole neighborhood will have a terrible time adjusting to the ugliness of it all, plus the much-reduced worth of our homes. The students at these schools, too, will lose out more than they will ever know. If these reduced setbacks are allowed, the awful idea of building student housing or any building in the upper area will ruin this sensitive area. Those amazing trees will be gone. There will be no forest ambience left on the UW campus uplands. I'm scared and shocked. I don't understand an unmitigated rush toward the destruction of trees, fresh air, natural water control, quiet space, and a healthy northwest ambience. The PUD promises repeated at least 15 times within the document. It states, quote, "All efforts will be made to preserve and enhance the tree clusters, native species within the uplands landscape. We want the quality and thoughtfulness of the landscape to foster a sense of stewardship reflective of a forest habitat, use of water conservation, and all existing native plant materials. We want the preservation of the mature trees, if possible. We want to enhance the natural character of the uplands as well as the floodplain. A notion of quality and thoughtfulness will be conveyed throughout the landscape, which will foster a sense of pride and stewardship over the entire campus site, uplands as well as lowlands. We want to leave the existing tree clusters preserved and enhanced to provide a backdrop, a buffer landscape, to be impressive, to be visible from a distance, and to be attractive throughout the year. This should include a mix of conifers and deciduous to provide screening from neighbors. Meanwhile, after being told last week that two trees would be only topped in the midst of the wind and the rainstorm, two more trees were entirely cut down. The UW property behind 182nd Court looks like a wasteland, a city dump. Please, let's think long-term, not short-term. Let's include wisdom along with education. Let's think quality of life for everybody, for neighbors, for students, for the air, the water, and the forests." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lowen. Next is Mr. Rick Sowers. Sowers? Sowers, perfect.
Well, good evening. My name is Rick Sowers, and we live very near the campus, actually. Been there for about 25 years. I would have to start with my career. I've worked for 35 years as a team leader, appraiser, analyst for the King County Assessors Office. So I'm very familiar with land use issues, zoning, implications that go along with that, and also problems. Typically, residential zoning. Well, actually, I've worked in a lot of larger cities on the east side here, Bellevue, Iskwa, Newcastle, so I've experienced all this personally outside of this. So typically, residential zoning, such as we live in, would have transitional zoning, green belts, roadways, or natural buffers to keep the separation between land use zones that are not similar or compatible. This is not true in the case of UW property to the north and east of us. And I would not consider GDC or campus zoning to be transitional nor compatible with residential zoning. In order to preserve the Sunrise Valley View Residential District, setback and building height restrictions were placed on the GDC and campus zoning to protect our residential area. By creating these restrictions, the zoning playfield was made somewhat level, not quite, but almost. These protective restrictions are now being petitioned for modification removal. If this residential area is to remain protected, as indicated in the 2015 Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan, the current zoning regulations must remain. If it is not retained, the campus zoning will overpower redirect market perception from a quality of family neighborhood to one of speculation and investment. The dynamics and characteristics of the neighborhood we have now enjoyed for many years will be completely altered. It will also bring uncertainty and confusion to both the marketplace and homeowners, at least or until the city redefines its comprehensive plan. I believe property values will be impacted negatively, especially those adjacent to the campus boundary line. And so I would ask for more thoughtful discussion and consideration before anything takes place. In closing, I was just curious if an independent study or appraisal has been completed to determine the impact of value to residential properties. And then if an impact exists, is the UW or city willing to reimburse us for loss? Are there other locations on the campus property that can be considered for student housing as opposed to right adjacent to the residential area? Thank you. That's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Sowers. Next on the sign-up sheet is Ms. Jean Zorins.
You caught me just as I was putting a piece of gum in my mouth.
Just sticking on top of this little thing.
And I'm a dog. Oh. Underneath here, be the first. I'm not wearing cougar colors. I'm a dog, so. I sent you this letter, and I'm just, as part of the record, and I'm just reading this for this part of the record. While retiring, many portions completed in the PUD make sense, as does reducing pricey redundancy. There were promises made in the PUD that guards foreseeable impacts on surrounding communities. Academic buildings are being built with a 100-year lifespan. Housing for a transient population shoved up against single-family does not show this same dedication. Please do not argue that single families do not hold that kind of life. Our home is a Beardsley House, over 110 years old. And like the people who have lived on this hill before us, the spirit of home for family is timeless. Now, these may be in that lovely thick part of what was in your agenda, but what is not leaping out of this large proposal are a few items. Items that require new construction to stay central and close to each other. Saturating growth areas that were mandated in the PUD to remain north and south of initial academic buildings. To do that first. Meaningful setbacks and step backs that will actually protect the privacies of our homes on our hill called Sunrise Valley View. 30 feet is not enough breathing room for this disparity of use. We're not asking for a wall, just a curtain. Real protections of mature second growth, something the PUD identified as fostering pride and a backdrop in the project. It is a privacy curtain that acts as a vital habitat and will support wildlife, which contributes to things like rodent control. Another thing we don't see, our promises made for less formal athletic and academic privileges for the neighbors. That was in the PUD. Believable protections for single families along with the campus provisions, such as setbacks. Lateral drilling notification for retaining walls, will they go under homes, under those properties, when you put in a retaining wall? Or so would an extended setback offset that? Home evaluations before pile driving, construction schedules, things like that. Also, effective buffers for residential homes across the street from multi-story buildings. Housing is an artificial construct to the original PUD. It is parasitical to come in under one set of terms and then change it with another. This kind of growth that has come from the UW in particular has willfully or ignorantly treaded on its promise to be a commuter school, a school inserted already into a city moderated for urban sprawl. These are the populations it was intended for. I have a few more sentences. Can I finish?
Absolutely.
Am I saying no to student housing? Of course not. Just keep like with like. We're missing alternatives. If they are buried within the new code change, we'd love to be made aware of them and give them support. I understand that when the comprehensive plan is addressed next year, we will be able to review it as well see suggestions along with staff assessments, and we are looking forward to that.
Thank you very much. Next I have Lily and Leonardo.
Hi, my name is Tammy Ercart, and I'm actually, Lil was going to speak for me because I didn't think I would be able to stay this late tonight.
Oh, okay.
So.
Well, glad you're able to be here.
Thank you. So first, I want to concur with what my neighbors have said so far, probably much more eloquently than I will. But I, many of you should have received a letter from me today that I would like to put on record and read to you. And you might get to do it anyway.
You're doing just fine. Thank you so much for coming.
I live in one of the homes that is directly against the University of Washington property. And I'm here because of my concerns about what's happening. I purchased my home over 10 years ago for my family in crisis. I apologize.
No need. You can stand with Lily, and if you're up for it.
All right. My name is Lilane Leonardo, and I am a neighbor of Tammy's. I needed a sanctuary for my mom, who had just been diagnosed with what we believed to be terminal cancer, and my son, who had been diagnosed with significant developmental delays, all wrapped in sensory issues. I feel that my home and everything that it provides us, including its value, is in dire jeopardy. You're wearing off on me. My only concern about this beautiful home was that it had a shared fence line with the university. After investigation, I chose to move forward with the purchase 100% because of the wording and the sentiment in the PUD and the trust that I had in both the city and the university to uphold that agreement and to maintain our boundary. Some of what I read in the university was committed to include was preserving the site's woodland character. Trees would be preserved to the maximum extent, landscaped buffers to provide separation. Landscaped buffers to provide separation between campus and adjacent residential areas.
Buffers.
Buffers to contain preserved trees and supplemental trees and landscaping. Maximize extent of forested uplands. Campus builds will be three to four stories in height. In a conversation with the university at that time, I was told that the plan was to build a two-story maintenance building in the area behind our home. A two-story building with the above landscaping was something that I felt comfortable with. I've had concern about their commitment to these statements over the years, given the destruction of the landscaping and the junkyard atmosphere that they created. However, maintained hope that the building of the maintenance building and the subsequent replanning would restore what we once had. I honestly believed that until about two weeks ago. Obviously, I moved forward with the purchase of my home and got several unexpected surprises along with the home. The biggest and best surprise is that I live in what has become one of the best neighborhoods in the city of Bothell.
If you want to finish the letter, that would be great.
Okay. You've seen the letter?
No, please finish reading it.
All right. I challenge you to find a closer neighborhood than ours. We are truly a village, and part of what is, a part of that is the extreme pride in where we live. Part of that pride is in the university, but bigger is the overall pride in Bothell. Many of you may know that we had to work with the North Shore School District and their rezoning plans. Our children were devastated by the idea of not going to Bothell High. Their identity is wrapped in being downtown Bothell, in living next to the historic cemetery, and in living next to the university. I'm happy to say that the school district recognized and accommodated our unique situation, and our children are headed to be Bothell High grads. Our children are more devastated by the idea of having a six-story building in their backyards. That is not the Bothell they know and love, and we all feel betrayed. My son is worried about losing his neighborhood. He is worried about losing his sanctuary that has been so critical to his amazing progress. He's worried about losing his village. I'm worried about his sleep and his quiet, two critical issues for a child with his challenges. So here we sit today, quite honestly, with way more questions than answers. The more we investigate, the more questions arise. So I ask you first and foremost to keep the public hearings open until the questions get answered, and all those that are impacted have an opportunity to come before you and speak. Second, I want to outline my thoughts on what this does and does not make, on what does and what does not make sense, and the additional investigation I believe needs to happen before an informed decision can be made. One, I believe that an investigation into a realistic transition zone between residential areas and the type of building the university is proposing. I'm not aware of any place within the Bothell corridor where a building higher than three stories is adjacent to single-family residents. Why should we be treated with less respect? I'm not aware of a six-story building currently on campus. Again, why does it make sense to put this next to residential neighborhoods? Landscapes buffers are to be maintained.
Ma'am, sorry to interrupt, just because it is going a little bit long.
I believe you have copies, and thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, and certainly your voice has been heard, and appreciate you coming forward with your concerns tonight. Next on the sign-up sheet is Amy Yarno, Yarnu? Is that you? Okay, thank you so much. And I honestly cannot read, I think it's Dave, but I don't know what the last name is. It was actually a signature and not. At 10828 Northeast 182nd?
That's Diane White.
Diane White, perfect. You must be left-handed like me.
At least she didn't call me Dwayne. Most people do.
Sorry.
As you can see, this is quite an emotional subject for all of us, so we pretty much take up the back three rows here. This is our whole neighborhood. But I'm Diane White, and my husband and I live at 10828 Northeast 182nd Court and have for 30 years. Our backyard shares a fence line with the college, so now you know, well, obviously you know what this is about. This is an email that I sent to all of you earlier today. We have just recently been made aware that, of issues regarding the college wanting to build a multi-story building on the other side of our property line, which is directly, I'm on 182nd Court, my backyard is right there. So we're not aware of this until most recently, and are quite upset for many reasons. It is my understanding that there is a document, the PUD, that calls out for setbacks, among other things, that the college wants to change. They seem to be in quite a hurry to do this, and our neighborhood feels that we are in need of more time to fully understand its wording and what it is that the college is proposing to have changed. One of the issues that we are most concerned about is the setbacks. As I understand it, it is currently 30 feet. I am unclear as to how all of the homes will be impacted by this. I do know that for our homes on my street, 182nd Court, we will all feel this most profoundly. There is activity going on behind us. There are survey markers are being placed, so it looks to me as the college is already in full swing to do whatever they have planned. I would like to point out that, as most families, most everything financially as well as emotionally is wrapped up in our homes. It's where we go to be safe. It is where we go to be loved, nurtured, and live our private lives in every aspect. With what the college is proposing, a multi-story dormitory, we feel threatened. Our privacy and our potential safety, not to mention property values. We were told about rules and regulations that will be in place, and that is all well and good, but then there's reality. College kids will do what college kids do. With that, I would like to say that we do not want a dormitory in our backyard. With that being said, we are willing to cooperate with the college and compromise. I would like to propose that the truly house be moved across the street into the current maintenance area or to the north of it a bit so that the maintenance yard can stay. That puts it adjacent to our property line and will maintain a 30-foot setback, as well as allowing us to keep most of our privacy. I sincerely object to having a multi-story building with windows and people staring down into my home. I believe that there is plenty of room for a dorm building elsewhere. Please do not make a decision right now regarding any changes to this current document. More time is needed for a complete understanding by all of us, as well as agreement. It's about our lives, our family, and our biggest investment, our homes.
Thank you, Ms. White. Appreciate your comments. Next is Rosemary Sutton.
Good evening. My name is Rosemary Sutton, and I want to say how much I support higher ed. It's where I spent my life, working for more than 30 years. I think it's good for Bothell to have a thriving campus, UW and Cascadia, and it's one of the reasons that I moved to this community recently. However, I want to speak against the proposed changes. I would like, in the setbacks, I would like to argue that I was shocked when I read the changes in the setbacks, the proposed changes. They seem to be dramatic changes, not minor changes, and I don't really understand why anyone would propose that, who wants to have good relationships with neighbors. I think it's particularly important that we pay attention to the setbacks, given that housing is proposed on campus. Housing will help to make the campus thriving. It will have, it will continue a nice active student life. However, it's in everybody's interest that campus remain a healthy, safe place, and that the neighborhood remains quiet and residential as it now is. So I would hope that the UW will think about alternate sites. I know that some of the sites are proposed for housing right on the boundary, and I know that there are alternate sites on the campus, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Sutton. Ms. Sandy Gwynn.
I'd like to bring up three items regarding the retirement of the PUD. One deals with property taxes. Second one is cool water. And third item is traffic mitigation. I attended the open house that the UW Cascadia had last week, and I had the opportunity to ask the consultant if they did an analysis, if, with the development, if it would help with the cool water in our streams. And the University of Washington has done a great job. They've recreated the largest wetland in the state, and their students work to, they constantly study it for various items, for the health of the wetlands. However, the consultant, to my surprise, said no. Now that tells me we don't have anything in place that would address it. We're increasing the impervious surface through the retirement of the PUD. I'd like, encourage the council to look at how we can, for future projects, also address that issue. And I don't know how to do it. I think it's going to be innovative, but I think it's something we need to do because our salmon are dying, and we're spending a lot of money, and things aren't necessarily working. Traffic mitigation. The UW Cascadia College based the traffic mitigation on a certain percentage of transit ridership and square footage of structures. Has an analysis been performed to see if that has been accomplished to what was the expected in the traffic mitigation? And how does that change with the retirement of the PUD? And property taxes, again, it's a question and something to be looking at for the future. I don't believe government, when they purchase property, pay the property taxes. And if we can look at the percentage of property that currently is not paying property taxes, because in the end, residents and businesses will have to cover and pay for the expenses. And finally, I don't live in Sunrise. I live in a different neighborhood, but one thing I have understood, unless the neighbors from all neighborhoods look out for one another, we're, eventually will be on the receiving end. So I hope you do protect the neighborhood. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Sandy.
I had a question for Ms. Gwynn. I'm sorry, I didn't follow your second point about the traffic impact. So there was a traffic impact study done when the campus was first formed, and that was based on assumptions of transit usage and square footage of buildings built?
That's something I'd like for the city to look into. What was their original basis for the traffic mitigation? How was it calculated? And my memory is there was a certain percentage of transit ridership that would be achieved, and I believe that somewhat lowered the traffic mitigation.
Okay.
But I'm not sure, it's not my expertise, but it's a question I have.
Well, I see Kelly Snyder behind you nodding her head, so she understands where you're going with that, so that's good.
Thank you.
Next two people on the sign-up sheet are Gina Blum and Robert Blum, or Blum. Ms. Gina?
Not as eloquent as the others, and I don't want to be facetious, but I do admit to some curiosity. Now, nobody I know personally, no individual, would buy a property just hoping that the city will grant them a variance. So I'm left wondering, was the university stupid in buying the property? No, that didn't happen. Were they merely arrogant? That's possible. After all, UW B is the elephant in Bothell, even though I could give you the 50 cents that they generate in revenue for us. Yeah, they sit wherever they want to. Or maybe they've received assurances in advance that changes to setback requirements would go through without any problems. Why else would you do it? I just don't know. Reading the PUD yesterday, I saw that there is supposed to be a native plant barrier forming a 30-foot buffer to our neighborhood. It's the west, you know, west end of the campus, and I checked. We went over the ground. And unless Himalayan blackberry has been upgraded to a Washington native, they haven't done a damn thing, and they weren't supposed to occupy until they did. My other thing is, what I read in the PUD is that there was going to be a five-foot-wide bicycle pedestrian lane along 180th. It would be striped and signed. Anybody seen it? No, I haven't seen it either. And again, there wasn't supposed to be any occupancy until this happened, but, you know, they're there. I appreciate that we're going to have more time. That's something I was really going to push on. We don't know if we have to hire counsel. It's something we're just starting to talk about. We're just realizing that what's going on. I don't know if there was a failure of notice, if the failure was on our end, your end, their end, I don't know, doesn't matter. We need more time, and so I appreciate that. My big question is, what happens when you deep-six the PUD? And does that mean that all previous agreements disappear? Why should we believe that 180th won't be open to traffic? Why should we believe that? I haven't got anything to point to anymore. If I say, hey, look what they did, you go, where's it written? I haven't got anything anymore. I've got nothing to predict too. I have no, our neighborhood has no predictability. We don't know what to do now. We don't know what's coming next. Today, tomorrow, next year, in a decade, no predictability. So I hope there are memorialized conditions, and I would certainly like to know what those conditions are. Just a question.
Yeah, if you could just take 10 seconds to wrap up.
10 seconds? I'll ask you, I'll just put a question to you. Don't expect you to answer.
Ma'am, if you could address your questions to the council, I'd appreciate it.
I'm sorry. I am curious why O-Tech has an orange top stick on the property behind our cul-de-sac. We're all wondering what the hell that is.
Okay, thank you.
So UW, glad you're here. I am a cougar. But it's lively.
Oh, all right. Mr. Robert Blum, Blum?
Thank you. It is blum, it's, you know, a lifelong struggle, oh, well. I would like to expand a little bit on two of the items from the condition, or the category one conditions that were part of the PUD in the overall use and development concept. It's page 168, roughly, in the multi-page handout that's out on the web. On page eight of those category one conditions, there's a section 24 and 24A. That's the one my wife alluded to, the five-foot signed and striped bicycle path along the 180th Valley View stretch between Beardsley and campus. Actually, there is a five-foot stripe. It's not signed. It only runs in front of the Larev condos, and it extends to neither the campus nor to Kaysner Way, but Kaysner Way is really close to Beardsley. That's what people hopefully meant. It didn't happen. On page four, section 18A of that same area, that is where the 30-foot buffer strip that's to be planted with trees, shrubs, and ground cover is located, with one tree for every 150 square feet. You know, quick math, that's a tree every five feet. Picking on the Perrymonts, who, you know, happen to have the stretch right in the corner there, southernmost, along the, what's currently, I would call the construction yard. They have 130 feet of adjoining property. If you do the math, that would be 26 trees. There are 13 trees, maybe. Along the entire strip that runs about 360, or 630 feet, that would be 122 trees. I didn't count them all, and trying to estimate how far 30 feet is is difficult, but maybe half that number. I'm concerned with compliance. I don't think the university is being intentionally obtuse on this. I've worked for UW Seattle for over 30 years. I know what happens when we get shortfall, shorted on a budget. Things happen. Things get to skip that are relatively non- nonessential. On the other hand, compliance has to be an issue. I'm concerned that, along with my other neighbors, that we were proposed for, you know, a residential campus. It's getting changed, and that's not what we bought in for.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
But I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Blum. All right. That's the last on my sign-up sheet. Is there anyone else who was just addressed? Ms. Agard?
Welcome.
Ms. Agard, 165 to 4, 104th Northeast. I'm not a neighbor of the University of Washington, but I did serve on the task force with NBBJ, together with Sue Keenest, that was set up when the plans for the co-located campus were started. And as many of you know, I was very active in the preservation of the wetlands down there. And I worked with the wetland biologist, Lyndon Lee, when they were established, and walked over the site before the campus was even built. So my concern that I want to raise with the council tonight is specifically the retirement of the PUD. That would be written into the current code, and my concern is that this would become a precedent throughout the city for retiring PUDs. Because once it's written in the code, any project that was a PUD could come in and apply for that. And so I can think of numbers of PUDs around. There's a Bridlewood just down from us. There is a Sammamish River crossing. There are the PUDs in the valley. However, they are a little different issue because that was covered by the North Creek Valley Plan at the time, as were the lowlands on the Truly property. But those have been replaced with comprehensive plan policies and regulations. So they're a bit different than what is being proposed tonight. So the concern I have is that there is a process for a major PUD change and a minor PUD change, and that this should be able, the university should be able to accommodate that. But I am very much opposed to changing the, the regulations that allow retirements of PUD. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wish to address counsel this evening on this matter? Anyone else? Okay, so that brings us to the end of public comment. As stated prior, we will, most likely at the end of this, motion to continue the hearing to January 19th. But before we get there, we do probably have some questions from council. Anyone wish to start off? Deputy Mayor Spivey?
Great. Thank you, Mayor. I guess it's just a couple questions, and I'll start with staff first. The items that were brought up by the neighbors to the campus, the issues such as the, the pathway, that they talked about, the bike and pedestrian path, the native buffer plant types, the depth of the, of the buffer, though, all those things. It seems like at some point we've should have known where, what the status of all that was. And so I'd just like your response as to, you know, should these have been done? Why, if they should have been done, why haven't they been done? And, and then with, with that, I'm essentially asking the same thing of UW Cascadia. If this was a part of the PUD, why, why haven't they been done? And why haven't you done your due diligence to maintain your buffer of native plants and, and the proper depth of your buffer? So that, that's basically my two questions for now.
We have provided a complete list of all the PUD conditions that, that have been placed on the campus through its various amendments since the inception. And that table that we provided you, as well as the PUD conditions that are intended to carry over into an interlocal agreement, detail what has and hasn't been done. Regarding the specific issues with, that were raised this evening, to be perfectly honest, standing in front of you right now, I don't know exactly which conditions they're referring to and whether or not they have been done, but we could certainly look into that for council.
Okay. And, and I would just, I'd like the, the colleges to, at some point, respond to that also.
Sure.
Thank you.
Chad Weiser with OTAC. Would you like my address? Okay. Representing UW Bothell and Cascadia College. With regard to the 30-foot buffer, and specifically, most of the western periphery of the, the campus, that buffer was implemented with the initial development of the campus. This particular parcel's been called the Truly parcel, been called the Development Reserve parcel, but it's the parcel that I think a lot of the neighbors are speaking of, that they're up against. That parcel has been used at times for storage of materials and, and of that type of use, but for the most part, has been undeveloped. And there's a lot of existing vegetation beyond even the 30-foot buffer.
Please, everybody let the speaker please speak. Thank you.
But regardless, as that site would develop, there's an intent to fulfill all of that 30-foot buffer requirements. So any area of the buffer that doesn't meet that standard will be met with any development of that site.
Right. But my base, the, the crux of my question is, why isn't it met now?
As mentioned, the rest of that parcel, for the most part, is undeveloped, and there's extensive vegetation. If you look at the entirety, there's about 200 feet of vegetation on the site.
Okay. Folks, we need to let speakers speak.
With regard to the 180th, I'm going to allow Nico Vanderhorst to address that. He was a bit more involved in those early days.
Before Nico?
Yes. Just, Gary, do you have the figure five, or attachment five, that you can display on the screen? I think it would be helpful as people are discussing things that we can see that and...
I'm not sure if this is the one you're referring to, Councilmember Evans, but will this one work for you?
It looks like, yes. I was looking at the one in our packet. It must be on page 109. It doesn't, doesn't have a page.
This is figure five?
Yeah.
It says figure five.
Figure five, yeah. Attachment five. Anyway, that'd be helpful to have that on the screen as we're discussing this.
Is that the old one? Could you do the overhead, please, Laura? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nico Vanderhorst. I'm a principal civil engineer with OTAC. And I wanted to just speak quickly to the, the questions about improvements, offsite improvements to 180th Street. There was actually three specific offsite improvements that were required with the initial phase of development. Roadway improvements to Beardsley Boulevard, which were completed. Roadway improvements to 185th Street, which were also completed. Roadway widening, addition of a sidewalk on 185th. On 180th, the requirement was to do some roadway widening and provide a walkway slash bike lane. We did that work. We striped the walkway. I don't believe we ever striped a specific bicycle lane, but I believe that was a, a shared decision that was made with staff at the time, that we really didn't have bicycle lanes to connect to. So we didn't want to create a bike lane without continuity. But the paving was done, the striping was done to create a walkway on 180th.
Okay.
All right. I'll, I'll take a wander out there and take a look.
Others? Councilmember Evans, you've got your question already?
Sure. Couple of questions that the public brought up, I made note of. Other location, I think it was Norm or Norma Wright, someone who mentioned the other locations for student housing. Can, can you point out on this schematic here of other potential locations for student housing?
Anna Kierman, University of Washington, Bothell. So we actually look at potential seven sites currently. One is the Marvin property. That's correct. The one. One is actually where the peril to the Discovery Hall. Peril to the Discovery. Yeah, to the Discovery Hall. So the Development Reserve. And down by the Recreation Center, by the sports field. So those are the potential sites.
So some of the potential sites are actually closer to the residential area than, are the existing sites, the Truly, you see the Truly House there, and some of these lighter areas on our map shows it as future buildings. So I'm assuming that there's three or four future buildings there. And, and those are the residential, or the dormitories potentially locations for those?
Those would be Cascadia plans for the, this is academic building.
Okay.
As well as the one next to it.
Where are the proposed dorms then, that would be on this, shown on this plan? Okay. Okay. So, and, and I don't know, maybe this is a question for Gary. There was reference made to transitional zones. Do we have anything here that could indicate, or serve as a transitional zone?
Well, the original PUD contained setback requirements, the 30 feet that's been mentioned of landscape buffer. So that, that's what was anticipated as a transition zone between the neighborhood and the campus. That's, that's contained in the existing PUD.
And so that's the area that, that you're saying would be transitional zones in this new, new proposal? Is that correct?
The, the proposal for those 30-foot buffers is changed very slightly in the, in the new proposal, but essentially, it's the same area.
Okay. In, in reference to pedestrian-oriented retail, I, I see in the proposal that it's, it looks like it's 5,000 is, is an appropriate, the college is saying 5,000 is an appropriate size for pedestrian-oriented retail, but then it makes reference to, up to 10,000 square feet also. Is there any plan for 10,000-square-foot or pedestrian retail facilities on campus here? Are, or are the majority of them 5,000 square feet? Or how many pedestrian retail locations potentially are there?
Chad's going to answer that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, for the most part, at this point, what the institutions are thinking of is more dining options. And those, for the most part, would be smaller delis and smaller kind of food court-type dining options. The reference to 10,000 square feet was having an allowance for, for instance, an expanded bookstore. And that's really the primary, call it retail space, that they would think would be of larger size. But there's really no desire to have the type of retail uses that you might typically see in downtown or the strip malls or things of that nature. It's really very student-focused needs.
And so the majority of those would be interior to the campus, probably?
Yes.
Okay. And then maybe one other question here that you can respond to. I, I read in here that there would be no requirement for public frontage. Is that public frontage on the rideaways? That there would be no improvements to the rideaways? What does that comment mean? No public, no requirement for public frontage?
I think that's referring to orientation related to buildings and to parking. There's, in the downtown plan, there's a lot of reference to that. And because, for the most part, the campus is kind of insular and all the roads are private, we didn't want to have those applied internally to the campus. Although there's a reference and note that the area we're requesting to rezone, which is up in this area, where we front on Beardsley, which is a public road, we would follow all the downtown plan requirements.
For improvements to the right-of-way there and things?
Improvements to any right-of-way and/or fronting the, the building along the roadway, similar to what would occur across the street in the general downtown corridor zoning. So there'd be a symmetry to how the buildings would be developed along Beardsley.
One other quick, there was a reference to building height, that less attractive designs due to building envelope restrictions, if, if they're not permitted to, I guess in this case, be located where they're at, or spread out, or whatever the case may be. What is, how, what would be a less attractive design due to the building envelope restrictions?
This is really in, in the case of some of the properties and parcels that are smaller along the perimeter, where the larger setback was being in the code. It's, as the building gets taller, the setback gets much, much larger. And so it restricts the, the footprint that you can work within, and limits the ability to articulate the building and do different design characters with the building as far as the overall footprint. And you get kind of a, a narrow, narrow box, basically. So that's what that reference is about. It's not necessarily related to the rest of the, the campus.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have right now.
Thanks. Councilmember Ray.
Okay, so, let's see. So the first thing I wanted to discuss is the schedule. So I wanted to make sure I understand. Is there a reason why the UW Cascadia would need their code amendments in and done by February of next year?
So I'll kind of back up for a second, if I may, to address that. We had submitted about a year ago to be on the docket for 2015. And the docketing process, I believe, was last February. We were added to the docket, and it was really changed to kind of a 2015, 2016 docket. And part of that was related to the periodic comprehensive plan updates that the city was already going through, that was required to be completed by the end of June. And in conversations with staff, we were, we discussed that they were pretty focused on that, and the council and the planning commission was. And so we said, okay, that's fine. And we, we said, when you're ready and available to help us through this process, we're ready. And so the discussion was to start that process in the fall, and that, just in talking with staff about what we might expect as far as the length of that process, maybe three months through hearings and before council, that February might be a likely timeframe that we could see approval of this. And we're aware that there's other comp plan amendments that are concurrently being processed through the planning commission and will come before the council. And there was a feeling that those would likely fall into place around the same time. So it's just a, a date that we've been talking about for several months. From the institution's point of view, because we started this a year ago, it's been kind of a long process for us. And I know that the public and others maybe hadn't been fully aware to this point of, of the status. So it's not that we're trying to push it along. It has to be done by February by any means. It's really to your discretion, the process and how we get there. But the campus is trying to plan for projects in general, and their funding cycle, and how they plan, and their whole design process. And their funding cycle and how they plan and their whole design process right now can be slowed by the fact that not sure what the regulations are going to be for particular projects. So the sooner we can get to that point, it would be preferred by the institution so that they can keep their processes forward of trying to provide quality facilities for their growing campus.
Because I'm just thinking ahead to the docketting process for 2016 and all the minor, so we have, every year, we have one shot at making a minor comprehensive plan update. And, you know, we have an appeal on the Fitzgerald area, totally not, not related to the campus at all. But I don't see, maybe that won't play out, maybe it will by February. But for the most part, we work on the minor complaint update, you know. And I think it's usually June, July, in which we actually pass it. So I just wanted to see where you, where the, where the campus is at, if it was okay. I mean, it really would kind of disrupt our normal process to try to get it done in February versus taking, you know, our one-time opportunity in 2016 and basically using it in the second month, so.
Okay, and I understand some of that sort of logistics and all the things that are going on? I don't know if you want to, okay.
So you're correct in saying that we, we have the ability to do one plan amendment each year. But historically, those have, have not necessarily occurred at the same time during the year. They've sometimes happened in December, the very end of the year, when we've had one amendment and worked through the year, worked through it during the year. But there have been occasions when we've also adopted some very early in the year. We knew that was the only amendment. In this case, we have several that are coming together at the same time, whether that's February or March or, or some other time. We're trying to manage the logistics of all of those and not really shoot for a specific month. But again, we, we can adopt that one-time plan amendment at any point during the year. It, it could be January or December or any time in between.
So can I ask a quick clarifying question? So I know that the, we're supposed to implement low-impact development regulations throughout our comprehensive plan. I believe that's underway and I don't think is due till June or July. That's why I bring up that date. Is that not the case? Are we not looking to do comprehensive plan updates through that process? I think we approved the contract last, the last meeting we were at.
My understanding with the Fitzgerald, if you're talking about the Fitzgerald LID area, is that, is that we're looking at?
There's a citywide one that we passed.
Those are not currently being worked on and I'm not aware that those would happen this year?
Oh, yeah, they had, they have to happen, they have to happen this year, yeah. By the end of this year, by the end of 2016, I'm sorry.
That's something I'd need to discuss with, with the director.
Okay. So, one of the things that was brought up by the residents that are here, about 185th and Valley View Road, they currently don't have any traffic or they're not allowed to have emergency vehicles and get through there. I didn't see anything, and I might have just missed it. But is that in the interlocal agreement to keep those as emergency access only?
I think the intent is, certainly the intent is to keep those as local access only. We, we plan to keep the emergency gates. The condition was to provide an emergency gate so that it was closed and that condition's been satisfied. So we didn't feel there was a need to carry it forward into an interlocal agreement. But I, on behalf of the campus, I don't think we'd be opposed to, to carrying that forward if that was a concern of the council.
Yeah, that's something that we've seen in the past about cut through traffic through neighborhoods and limiting that, obviously, would be important to the residents that live in those neighborhoods. So, so speaking of the setbacks and the building heights, so the, the proposal from, I believe it's from UW Bothell, that's requesting the, basically the elimination of setbacks and just having the 30-foot buffer and having the ability to go up six stories. I think that, I mean, if that was my backyard, I'd feel like I was in a fishbowl. And so I, I really do sympathize with the residents that are neighboring there. And I hope there is some sort of compromise that we can work out between the residents and the, oops, the residents and the, the college to, to make it a little bit more appetizing instead of having a six-foot story, a six-story building in your backyard. That's just a comment. So, let's see, what else do I have here? So there was a bunch of locations, I'm glad Councilmember Evans brought it up, about where the student housing is going to go. And there was, let's call it five or six different locations. Is, are we literally talking about five or six different locations of housing? Or is there just going to be one housing in one of those places?
Yeah, the study of those locations is to study kind of, I guess, the best alternatives for the campus as to where they could put housing. I don't, there's no intent of constructing at all of those locations. You know, I think there may be one or two over time, but at this point, they're trying to find the best location for a housing project in the near future.
Okay, just, just one housing project in the near future?
Yes.
Okay. So in our, in our packet, we have a campus district map. It's on a page, for, for the page likers, page 89 of 262 of our council packet. And it does include the additional parcels that are to the north and basically about up to the, the Beardsley Boulevard and basically surround the northern portion of the, the neighborhood. Whereas the two, I'm sorry, I don't know your street numbers, the two dead-end cul-de-sacs there. So I, I guess I kind of pile, I want to pile on with Councilmember Evans on the comment that meetings, road standards is essential and it should be in this interlocal agreement for roadways that are external or not owned by the, the campus. I think that's really important, that it's either, it's either the taxpayers that pay for it or it's the school that pays for it, which is still the taxpayer. But we have a lot of road improvements throughout the city that we need to tap the residents of Bothell to, to fund, so. And, let's see. My favorite topic, okay. So on page 101, stormwater requirements, 101 of our packet. And there's some response to the questions asked in the study session that we had last, on the November 24th. And then it has kind of a different, I guess, the answer is not extremely clear, but what is extremely clear is on page, oops, hold on a second, make sure I'm on the right page. Ah, there it is, okay. On page 101, it says, "All submitted," so this is the interlocal agreement between the school and the city. It says, "All submittals for the initial and subsequent phases of development shall be in compliance with the 1990 King County Surface Water Design Manual as may be subsequently amended or superseded. Prior to issuance of any construction permits, community development and public work shall approve the final TIR calculations and final design." So I just want to make sure I understand. Are we, when you go to build a new building, is it going to be required to meet the current stormwater design standards? Or do you want to use this design standards from 1990?
All new buildings will be designed to use the current standard, whatever that standard may be, at the time of development. And that's what we've been doing with all the new buildings on campus. The reference to the 1990 standard, that was simply the PUD condition that was in place at the time. And that was used to develop the initial two phases of, of campus, which was, where the two phases where a lot of the primary infrastructure was constructed and a lot of the stormwater system was constructed. So I think the point of carrying this condition forward into the interlocal agreement is simply to acknowledge that a lot of the, the core infrastructure that's in place today was developed under that 1990 standard. And we can, we plan to continue to use that infrastructure as it's been constructed. As new buildings are built, all the, the new stormwater systems associated with that building will meet the current standard.
Okay. So it will meet the state of Washington standards for stormwater management that are currently in effect within the city of Bothell?
Well, it will meet whatever the adopted stormwater regulations are by the city of Bothell at the time. For example, currently it's 2005 ecology manual, and that may change over time.
I think in point number three on page 101, it actually says that, "As may subsequently be amended or superseded."
Right, yeah, that's, that's why when I saw 1990, I was like, well, that's been superseded quite a few times. So if we're writing a new interlocal agreement, I was just curious why we would have 1990 in here. Well, yeah, you're correct, it's 2005 ecology manual now that we have adopted locally in the city of Bothell.
Yeah, I think for this particular condition, we were just maintaining the language that was in the PUD document.
Okay. And I think that's the end of my list.
Councilmember Sandberg? Just looking at council, it's 8:21, we usually break at eight. We're certainly going to have to extend our evening or tonight. But I think we'll just finish up our questions and then we can take a break after that. Does that work?
Sure.
Great, Councilmember Sandberg?
So, first of all, I wanted to thank the members of the neighborhood and the college campuses for being here tonight. I think it's a really good show of the kind of dialogue that is happening and can happen and will happen. And just to build on, I think, Mr. Weiser, you know, just to explain the process, because it does feel like it came up at the end of the year. But council did approve this, this particular item as a part of our 2015 docketting process at the beginning of the year. So the docketting processes, you know, what code and plan amendments will we try to consider for the, for the 2015? And so it, it happened at the beginning of the year and then we just got busy with other things that it wasn't until the end of the year that it showed up. So, so I think we're having this conversation now, we're starting this conversation. It's going to be continued into next year, maybe February, you know, maybe that's not realistic. Maybe that's, that's a softer deadline. But I appreciate the, the input that we've had tonight. And what I heard tonight from the community, their, most of their concerns centered around building setbacks and the incompatible uses of large buildings, especially dormitories, right up against the single-family boundary and the loss of native vegetation, which was called out in the original PUD, the importance of preserving existing vegetation to the maximum extent possible. That kind of language, like, you know, forested hillsides and our feathered edge is spread throughout our entire comprehensive plan. So that is a community value that we hold very strongly. And so I think that we need to make sure that those promises made back when this PUD was originally approved, those promises made are kept. And what I also heard was that the campus was originally proposed as a commuter campus. And now it's evolved into a campus with a pretty significant residential component. So I would like, and it doesn't have to be tonight, but I would like the, the campus representatives, and you've already talked about this a little bit, you know, to, to think about where else campus housing could occur on your property as opposed to being in the development reserve area. And I, and I'm kind of not even talking about campus triangle yet. It's, it's not in the shaded area here because that is a, another issue that I'd like to spend some time on. But we heard tonight that one member of the public mentioned relocating the truly house up into, I would imagine, up into the development reserve area. Is that an option where, because that seems like that would free up a lot of developable property east of 110th Avenue? And so, you know, what other options are there to move housing, student housing and these larger building, buildings farther away from residential? I see that in the, sort of the dark shaded area or the medium shaded area, which is buildings to be proposed in the, around the south parking garage, is, is building, you know, campus, I mean, excuse me, campus housing like over structured parking? I don't, I don't know what your plans are for that, for that area. But is, is that something, an option? I just, I really hear from the community that they would like us and you to consider other options for, for campus housing. And then, let's see here, there's, on page 78 of our agenda packet, there is language there, and I have a note to myself, "Please explain what exists today and what is proposed." And so on page 78 of our agenda packet, it is sort of in the middle of the page, underneath the section that's titled setback regulations, where the campus is adjacent to single-family neighborhood, the campuses propose two special setback requirements, one of which is consistent with general downtown corridor and the other to maintain the 30-foot vegetated buffer. So one's a special setback requirement. I was wondering if you could explain that a little bit? And I always like to think about in terms of what exists currently and what's proposed so that people have an understanding of what, what the change is.
So we have these two areas, basically on the zoning map that I think was mentioned earlier. See if I can find the reference here. It's page 90 of your packet. There, it's all, you know, campus district in blue, but the four parcels that we were looking to rezone that are currently general downtown corridor, we have hatched separately so that it looks distinctive from the rest of the campus. And so the, the big difference there is with regard to the four-floor height overlay. Because currently, GDC has a maximum height of 45 feet. And at 35 feet, there's, there's a special setback next to single-family. And so we're basically honoring that exact same setback. And then what we had proposed is when you go to 45 feet, there's a step-back provision for the building when it's above 35. And we asked for some relief from that. The step-back was, in the current GDC code, 65 additional feet back from where the face of the, the building would be for the first 35 feet high. And we've asked to reduce that to 30. We have done, and it's also in your packet, well, actually, yeah, we do have that in the packet, the additional setback graphics. Attachment six.
I think there's also attachment seven, which is sort of the...
Seven, thank you. Thank you. It's kind of hard to see up there.
So this, this applies everywhere in the campus district? Which would include the triangle part, part that you're talking about?
Actually, to start with the four-floor overlay, if you go to the second page, it's not this one here, but it's the one that shows a slope. And I can put it on the screen here, make life easier for everybody. So after we spent a little bit more time after our initial request with reducing the step-back from 65 to 30, we actually did some analysis of where this would likely apply. There's really only two parcels where this would apply in the four-floor overlay where it's adjacent to single-family. So I'm going to point those out. It's right here, which has been called the Marvin property. It's an undeveloped parcel. And then this is where Husky Hall is right now, where there's actually a existing building. So what we did is, we had some information on the topography of that undeveloped parcel, since that was also a site being considered for housing. And we took a look at how the current development regs apply building height on a sloped site. And what you'll actually see is that, that building height follows the slope. And what ultimately results is the single-family adjacent to the south, we'll really never see anything over 35. to the south will really never see anything over 35 feet because by the time you step back and you want to go up another floor, the height requirement keeps dropping. And so, we really, you can't realize on that particular site, the, the fourth floor. So, we're, we're prepared to basically modify our request on that to match exactly what the GDC says, so we wouldn't change anything with setbacks for the four-floor overlay. We would just match what's there right now, which was previously approved.
And so, I didn't, and this might be a question for staff, I didn't go back and pull out the, the existing downtown master plan maps. But when I look at this map on page 90 with the light blue shading for general downtown corridor, which is on the north side of Beardsley, that shows it's a three-floor height overlay. So, was there a three-floor height, is there currently a three-floor height overlay on the GDC, GDC zone property south of Beardsley?
No. The, all the four parcels that we're asking for the rezone on was allowed to go to four floors.
Okay, so the existing zoning allows four floors?
Correct.
Okay.
So, we're really, based on the slight modification on the step-back for the fourth floor that I said that we're willing to change, we're matching on setbacks, buffer, and building height, exactly what the GDC says.
So, why, then why request it to be a part of the campus zoning and then, because you could, you could, under existing zone, get everything you want, or, you know, the identical proposed versus current under a GDC zone, which is, you know, prescribed by code versus a PUD process?
There are, there are minor changes with regard to uses that are related to the campus district versus GDC. There's also a desire to just have the campus under one zone so that it's easier for the administration to manage their, their properties, and they, they know what they, their requirements are, and it's consistent throughout, so it can be managed as a whole. So, that's one of the major reasons.
Okay. I know that we're running late, and I'll, and I'll save my questions for the next time, but just a couple of items, and, and I guess these aren't really questions, in the verbiage, talking about impervious surface coverage. I think it, I find it interesting that you want an impervious surface coverage to match the downtown core, yet you don't want to match a lot of the requirements of the downtown core. So, it's there, to me, is, is a, there's a disconnect. There's a lot of things like architectural requirements, parking requirements, all of that, that you want, you want to be your own entity in that respect, but then you want to match for the impervious surface coverage requirements for downtown. And, and I'm concerned about changing the impervious surface coverage. So, that's a comment. And then, on page 81 of the agenda packet, our comprehensive lan, uh, plan language talks about a community vision in which the campus is linked to the downtown. And I'm concerned with the allowance of the pedestrian-oriented retail with all of its allowable uses. And, and then your own description that the campus is inward-facing and insular, that in allowing that, we're not creating a community connection because you're essentially creating all the services, you could create all the services that you need on campus. And I'm not sure that this process can address that, but that, that is a concern that I have.
In response to that, I think this is reflected in some of the responses to questions about that. I think we acknowledge that by using that particular retail category, it's probably bringing in more retail uses than really the institutions are even thinking about for the campus. And so, we're certainly willing to talk about reducing that list. We have no problem with that whatsoever.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Lynn?
Thanks so much. I'll be, I'll be very, very brief. One thing that I appreciate about the comments tonight is that this is kind of exactly how the process should be, is we have, you know, as I said at the very beginning of this, there's not going to be any decision made tonight. The campus is, one, has presented their request, and the community now has an opportunity to become engaged. One thing I would encourage community members who spoke tonight to do is to reach out, not only to our staff, but directly to the campus. The campus has a great staff. They're very knowledgeable. They're people who have a very deep institutional history with both the community of Bothell and also with the neighborhoods. A few years ago, we had many folks from Valley View come in and speak repeatedly about parking issues in their neighborhood, and we, as a council, took notice of that. We addressed it, as one of the speakers had mentioned. And I will tell you, the comments at the first meeting that we had on that, people were really, really ticked off. The heat in the room was palpable, and people were enraged. And at the end of that process, I think, you know, working together with the university and working with our staff, we were able to come up with a solution that worked for both our campus and for the community. So, I would encourage you guys to, on both sides, to engage in that and to reach out to each other directly. Secondly, and this is just kind of a side note, there were two comments that were made about the economic impact of the university. That really isn't in question. I mean, the economic, the University of Washington Bothell and Cascadia are the two probably, if not the highest, then, you know, they're in the top three economic impacts, positive economic impacts on the city of Bothell. Putting aside for a moment whether they pay property taxes or not, they are an enormous job creator. They are an enormous driver of our cultural and economic life. And there can be many things said, and I think there's many legitimate concerns that have been brought up tonight about, you know, neighbors' concerns and traffic concerns, et cetera. But the idea of the University of Washington being an economic drag or an economic neutral is not really, is not really one of them. That's not really something that's up for debate or is a policy, is a, is a policy issue. The last question that I had, and this is something, again, I won't be on council next year, so when this comes back, but I would like to have staff take a look at the question that Ms. Agard raised, which is what kind of, how do you handle this in a way that doesn't set up a presidential value? I'm less concerned for bridal wood or for existing developments, and I, correct, I'm not sure that bridal wood is completely built out, but where there's a PUD was something that can't really be changed as opposed to a growing and dynamic institution. I think that's something that as, as a community and as a council, makes sense to look at how that's approached. So, that's all that I have, and that's a question that hopefully, an answer to that can be provided to the new council in the new year. But with that, I would move to continue this public hearing until January 19th.
Great. Second, any discussion? Deputy Mayor Spivey?
Great, thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm all in favor of that, and I was hoping to be able to clarify my request for staff response. And I don't know if that now is the appropriate time, or if I can do it afterwards, or...
You made the request. If you wanted to just clarify that with staff, it's certainly going to do that during our break.
Yeah. In, in my request for your response, could you have some photo documentation on those issues, please?
You want to wish to speak in motion?
Thank you.
Hearing none. All in favor of moving the, continuing the public hearing to January 19th, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, passes unanimously. We find ourselves at the hour of 8:40. I'll first ask for an extension of time, and then we'll take a break.
I will move to extend the meeting until 9:45.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of moving the meeting to 9:45, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. So, we'll extend to 9:45. We'll take a approximately 15-minute break till 8:55. We are adjourned until then.
There is.
Bothell City Council is back in session after a short break. Next item on the agenda is AB 15192 to consider approval of a purchase and sale agreement and development agreement with WRES I Inc. for Block A. Our city manager, Mr. Bob Stowe, has the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. I've been working with WRES I Inc. to develop a purchase and sale and development agreement for Block A. Block A, as was illustrated on the screen, it's a lot of 38,850 square feet. The purchase price is listed and it will be sold, proposed to be sold for $1,075,000. The development on this block is for 24 for-sale homes or condominiums with a closing date no later than June 30th of 2016. The city and Norman Partners, who, Norman Partners was the city's real estate broker, in this case solicited interest from buyers of Block A. And WRES I Incorporated was chosen and entered into a letter of intent with the city of Bothell and here to present the proposed purchase and sale and development agreement for Council's consideration. And again, this is for property that the city earlier surplus this evening. I'd be glad to address any questions that Council might have at this time.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Evans.
Bob, where, the park is to the east. Where's approximately the park boundary? How does the park boundary abut this property here?
Park property abuts the boundary on this location.
Okay.
So you can see now this is under, this is undergoing part of the Open Creek Channel from Horse Creek.
Right.
And so it's passive use portion of the park.
And so the area to the south, is that the little walkway? Looks like it bends around through there. Is that, is the park to the south of this also?
That is, yes, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Great, other than that, Councilmember Sandberg, and then Ray.
This agreement came to us a couple of weeks ago, and at that point we, you withdrew it from the agenda because there wasn't any, their, well, their interest had changed. So why are they back in the agreement?
The buyer had some concerns about access to the property and feels more confident in his ability to work with the city staff as well as Department of Transportation to gain access off of this intersection. And he'll be studying that as part of the due diligence period associated with this agreement. As currently sits, the property has restricted access right in, right out, and the buyer would like to explore and will be exploring the ability to extend that intersection into Block A, allowing for greater access to the site.
So, so the last time that was before us, I thought the proposal did stipulate a right-in, right-out only access, and so now that has been changed?
Hasn't been changed. That is the only available access on the site today. In order for access to be provided through this intersection onto the site would have to receive approval from Washington State Department of Transportation.
And?
So the owner will be examining that and working with our staff and then working with Department of, Washington State Department of Transportation staff to determine if that's a feasible alternative during the due diligence period.
And then do we know, you know, what the Department of Transportation's criteria are on granting that? Because my, my concern is that 522, this portion of the Crossroads Project is already pretty congested at peak periods. And then to add another access, to add another priority in lighting to that, to that intersection, to that section of the road is just, in my opinion, going to be increasing traffic, increasing slowdowns, and yet when, if it's constrained by a right-in, right-out only configuration that doesn't constrain the traffic so much. And so I guess I would want to know, and maybe I see we've got Steve Morikawa here can talk about, you know, what the DOT looks at when they allow signalization to occur. Because I would imagine that the price of the parcel was based on its limited access. So if, if like a lighted entry was allowed at 180th there, I would think that would pretty significantly increase the value of the property.
Well, this would be an expense, if it were allowed, would be expense borne by the buyer or the developer. And you are correct that the value of the property was established not only because of its limited access, but also because of the configuration and the size of the lot. So all those things combined resulted in very few buyers submitting any letter of interest or any inquiry for this property.
So if, so if we were, I mean, if we're, if we're considering some type of entry lighted probably at 180th, would, would we not want to go out to bid and re-advertise that the access was improved for this parcel and potentially get more offers with other options to consider?
Well, you know, based on the number of inquiries that we received with this property, I think the fact that we have a willing buyer and a willing development to go forward that's consistent with our plan is something that we should consider at this time. And we don't know at this point in time whether or not the buyer will be successful in his discussions with, with Department of Transportation. Obviously, a transportation study would have to be prepared to examine the impacts associated with the number of trips that will result from 24 condominiums, which is the least number of, of trips associated with all the land uses that we've examined that could occur on this lot. But again, because of the size and the configuration as well as the access, it's really limited to simply a residential development.
And then when we talked about this last, I thought you had mentioned that there might be a potential for some kind of bridge access from the park, the road park, the roadway there, some kind of access with a bridge over to the parcel. Is that something that's still under consideration?
I think it still is under consideration. I'm not sure the, the likely feasibility of that occurring. It's a very expensive proposition to put a bridge across the Open Creek Channel that we are constructing. Some analysis that this buyer has done has indicated that that driveway access or that bridge access cutting through the park, although the master plan had anticipated that occurring, shows a 12 or 13 feet of peat underneath and just very expensive. So a very deep foundation system would need to be constructed in order to access that area of the site. But again, we haven't done that analysis. That's just simply by some analysis that the buyer has performed and will need to perform more as part of his due diligence to examine both that alternative as well as the other alternative of gaining access through the intersection.
Councilmember Sandberg, we'll reach in 10 minutes. Do you have any further questions?
Well, I was wondering if Steve could come up and talk about what he knew about the DOT's criteria, what they might look at to, if they were to grant access at the 180th intersection.
And I guess I'll clarify, it's not only the DOT, our own traffic engineers have to look at it as well. So they will look at how, how that would affect the flow of traffic, because like you said, that's, the minor flow is in coming out of the parcel, and you want to make sure the highway flows well. So that would be one thing they look at. They would also look at safety to make sure that the movements that are there, there wouldn't be conflicts and issues. They already talked about potentially restricting the left in and only allowing the left out. So there may be a combination of restrictions. And again, like Bob said, there would need to be a study to see if that light gets re-timed for 24 cars, whatever that, 24 apartments, whatever that generates in a peak hour, how that would affect the overall flow. But we don't know that right now without the study.
Thank you, Steve. Okay. Councilmember Ray.
My, my questions have been answered. Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'd move to recommended action.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lamb and a second by Deputy Mayor Spivey. Any discussion?
I have an amending motion.
Okay.
I would like the motion to include, or in the contract language, that would, one, preclude any bridge access over the Open Creek Channel that we just discussed. So that would be bridge access through the park over the recreated channel. So preclude that.
Just as clarity, a pedestrian bridge or vehicular bridge? Does it matter?
It would be vehicular bridge.
Vehicular, okay.
And also preclude any left in to the project. So that would be westbound on 522. There currently is no left-hand turn pocket, and so I would want it to be clear in the purchase and sale agreement that there would not be a possibility of a left intern. I don't think the road as it's configured now supports that.
Okay, so your motion includes a preclusion of a vehicular bridge access and a left-turn lane, or left turn into the property?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Well, I think that, I think we need to be very aware of the traffic impacts that this development could have if there was access allowed from 180th. And like I said, I, there is no left-hand turn pocket currently on Bothell Way to service that. And so to create any kind of street configuration that would allow that would be to the detriment of the existing traffic flow. And so I feel like the price is very competitive. The price is based on a right-in, right-out configuration, and I think this is a reasonable thing to request.
Okay, thank you. Andy, Councilmember Ray, do you wish to speak to your second?
No, I just, I had the same concerns about access and just the flow-through on Bothell Way Northeast. So I support both of those. And yeah, having a, I didn't even know about the bridge going through the park, but yeah, that, that doesn't really sound very well either. So I do support the many motion.
Yeah, I won't be voting for the amendment. I mean, logically, I don't think a vehicular bridge makes any reason. We'd have to give, obviously easements to make it occur, but I don't think if a left turn can be attained for 24 units, kind of a minimal impact. And if he can work on doing so, then he would, he or she would have the right to do so. So anyone else? Councilmember Evans?
City manager, how would the, this amendment potentially affect the sale of this property right now, do you think?
Well, any amendment to the purchase and sale agreement would require renegotiation with the buyer, so I wouldn't be able to tell you whether or not he would accept those changes or not. The agreement that you have in, in front of you has been executed by the buyer.
Right.
The, the mayor is correct that any easement or crossing of city property through a bridge or otherwise through the park would require the city's approval. So that certainly could be done without including that language in the purchase and sale agreement. That obviously would, might be an interest to the buyer to know that the council has no interest in allowing that to happen. And I'm not sure how he would react to if he were capable of constructing and receiving approval in order to mitigate a left turn lane and intersection, if that were removed as a possibility, whether or not that would prevent the project from moving forward. If, again, if it were possible and the city were to approve it based on the traffic report that was submitted.
Right. I, I would be willing to bet the rest of my council salary here that neither of those two things are going to happen. I just, the cost to build the bridge is going to be cost prohibitive, I think, whether or not he could even get the environmental considerations to do that. And secondly, the chances of the DOT approving a left lane in their left-hand turn pocket, I think is, in my mind, the little I know about traffic in that situation is slim to none, but you know, maybe, I don't know, maybe there's, there is some benefit to that. I, I question, you know, how it would affect traffic. Would it be worse? Would it be better? I don't know. I, I think he's purchased, purchased it on the left in, left, or left, right-in, right-out only access, and he knows that, and that's basically what he's basing his proposal on.
And that's exactly what we've informed him. He is aware that this purchase and sale agreement is based on a right-in, right-out. Certainly, he can evaluate and propose a alternative access as part of the due diligence period, and he intends to do so, but that would require a transportation study for a review and that of DOTs.
And again, I think that would be a long shot for DOT to approve that, and yet we still have a final, some input into that too, as far as doing our own traffic analysis. So I'm, I'm not, I'm just, I appreciate the concern of the amendment, but I don't want to run off a potential buyer here, and I think those concerns are, are, the risk just isn't there that has been expressed in, in my mind.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Lamb, Deputy Mayor Spivey, I saw your, your light on, then Councilmember Lamb.
I kind of wish they weren't put together because I support one and I don't support the other. And so that being what it is, I, I feel that one in the hand is worth two in the bush. So I, I will not be supporting the amending motion at this point.
Okay. Councilmember Lamb.
I won't be supporting the amending motion either. I mean, I think if you look at this, they have, the buyer has until January 29th to evaluate in a way feasibility, and then they give up $40,000 at that point. There's no way under any, under any possible rationale that they would be able to get approval for a left-in, left-out by January 29th. It's not going to happen. So I mean, I think it's, our city has the ability to preclude that later on, both the bridge and this, through other mechanisms. And I think what we And I think what we would be doing is basically going back and retrading on a deal, so I'm not going to support this amendment.
Great. So everybody's had the opportunity to speak on this. So unless we're opening the floor up again, I think we'll go to a vote. And so this will be for the amendment made by councilmember Sandberg, seconded by councilmember Rayem. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. So fails two to four. You still have the floor?
So I guess, I mean, it's hard for me to support this because I feel very strongly about the traffic impacts that could be incurred by this development. 67% of our residents tell us that the worst problem we have is traffic. And we hear again and again that, and you keep approving things that could potentially make the traffic worse. And if, if the two things that I described are a virtual impossibility and not something that the applicant is either likely, who didn't negotiate on, is likely to not get and likely doesn't care about, I don't understand why we wouldn't make our intentions clear. And so I'm not willing to, to bet on the fact that DOT is not going to grant them whatever access they want. And so for that reason, I'm not going to be supporting this, this purchase. I think, I think the, I think this block was marketed on a very constrained access, which determined its price point, and now we are considering much easier access. And, and I think that we could re-advertise if that, if we're going to allow that easier access, I think the property is worth more, and we could re-advertise at that.
Great, thank you.
So I'll be voting no.
Councilmember Rayem, any comments?
No.
Okay. Anyone else? I think everybody's had the opportunity to speak. So the motion was made, I believe, by councilmember Lamb, seconded by councilmember Spivey, deputy mayor Spivey. Is that what I have written down?
Yeah, I think Evans did.
Oh, Evans did, okay. Yeah, I think you both did it at the same time. So for the record, I'll take the motion from councilmember Lamb, seconded by councilmember Evans. All right, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
So passes four to two. Thank you, city manager. Next on our agenda is AB 15193, Consider Adoption of Resolution Approving and Establishing Certain Right-of-Way Within Downtown Bothell. Mr. Steve Morikawa, the floor is yours.
Good evening. So over the past almost a decade, the city has been implementing its downtown revitalization plan. This has required the purchase of properties, the use of condemnation in certain instances, and the sale of properties as well. The city has purchased whole properties as well as portions of properties, and we've designed and constructed projects, roadways, that have created new roads or modified existing ones. The city has created the revised or new right-of-way through various mechanisms, such as the use of boundary line adjustments and short plats. It's also purchased individual strips of properties. And Exhibit A of the resolution lists all those discrete mechanisms that occurred over the 10-year period. On the overhead, the orange, or the reddish-orange highlighted area identifies the new right-of-way that was created over this period of time, and the yellow is the old right-of-way that has been assembled to surplus properties. While we have already identified the right-of-way via the numerous listed actions in the resolution, staff feels it would be prudent to have a single, clear council action that approves these right-of-way boundaries. That way, if there's ever a question about the council's intent on dedicating the right-of-way, we can point to this action. As an example, when we were going through this process and purchasing some properties or working on the State Route 522, it took us a long time, a number of, a lot of time and effort and cost to do a lot of research to do these things and convince people, especially like title companies and the tax assessor's office, on what the property was and where the right-of-way was. So we'd like to be able to point to this if that ever comes, and it would be a quick, quick matter and inexpensive and fast matter to do. So as such, staff recommends that council adopt this resolution approving the downtown right-of-way, including dedication of the right-of-way, as described in the listed boundary line adjustments, short plats, street vacations, and other recordings in the list on the resolution. Open to questions if there are?
Great, thank you. Councilmember Rayem?
I hope this is an easy question, but the right-of-way on Bothell Way Northeast, where the Safeway site is, I noticed that we don't have that actually under control.
You're right.
What's going on there?
Yeah. So right now, there's an easement there, and you're correct. So I was overzealous in my highlighting this afternoon. That one, that one block, well, I didn't highlight it. That one block there, we still currently have to do a transaction. And that's the one that we're going to basically trade part of the old Wexler or Riley's parcel and some of the old Grease Monkey. And I think there's some cash that has to be transferred as well, and then we're going to get control of that last multiway, Boulevard stretch.
Okay.
And that should take place in the next month or so.
Okay, thanks.
Good, thank you. Councilmember Sandberg?
Steve, are you able to point on the screen? Okay, so was he talking about, were you just talking about the north-south segment there? Okay.
The gap. I thought I might have highlighted by accident, but there is a gap there right now.
And then what about Main Street Extension?
So Main Street Extension, like you can see, there's another gap there. We have the corner property to the north, there's those four homes on 98th Street. So the furthest one to the south, we actually had to buy some land to put some sidewalk as we were doing the Horse Creek project. We didn't want to come back and bother them again, so we purchased the strip we needed for the multiway. The Bothell Service Center is that last missing piece there.
For the multiway or for the Main Street Extension?
I'm sorry, for the Main Street Extension. And so the last piece there is the Bothell Service Center, which we are trying to acquire. Now, this is not the last property transactions. We have a couple more boundary line adjustments we're going to do. We're going to do one more for this area in the Lot O, Lot P, Lot N area. And the city hall, I believe, has one as well, internal to the lot, which shouldn't affect the right-of-ways themselves.
And what about the pedestrian access that goes through Lot N, between Lot N and O?
So depending how that, well, is it an easement right now or property? Easement, pedestrian? Okay, so that would be an easement for a walkway. So that wouldn't show up on the property boundaries, or as right-of-way per se.
And it sounds like we have more property boundaries to complete and a little more right-of-way to obtain. So why do we, why would we do this tonight instead of doing it once we have all of those segments accounted for?
I'm not sure what more right-of-way we have to obtain.
So the parts that aren't shaded, so like the north-south portion of the multiway, and then the east-west portion of the Main Street Extension.
We can certainly wait. This is a belt and suspended thing. We thought it was a good time to do this. We've been aggregating everything. We're about to start selling some of these properties and closing them. We thought it'd just be a good time. But you're correct, there's a few more things to go.
I guess I, I guess I don't understand the, the belt and suspenders approach. What are we, what are we trying, what pants are we trying to hold up?
A lot of these property transactions took place over a period of time. And I'll give you an example as a crossroads project. You know, in a typical road project, you might come with a design and say, this is the right-of-way, please approve of it. In our case, we bought whole parcels, and then we designed a road, and we owned the whole parcels. So we basically set the right-of-way when we designed the road and you authorized us to build it. So now we want to come back and make sure that it's clear to whoever comes and questions the process that that was the intent. And the intent was to build that roadway and set the right-of-way behind the sidewalk. But we wouldn't want to have to go back and trace all the decisions through that point. It would be clearer if we were to point to one map with a list of all those actions and just say, here it is. And we can do that for these multiple transactions that's taken place, rather than, and we're not only doing this for now, we're doing this for 20 years from now, 40 years from now. If there's questions that come up, this is an easy method for somebody to basically record that we're good on the right-of-way plans.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Lamb?
I was going to move the recommended action and then speak to the motion.
Let me look at the other two, have not had a chance to speak yet.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by councilmember Lamb, and a second by councilmember Evans. Any discussion? Councilmember Lamb?
So I appreciate the work that staff's done on this. I mean, I think clarity in property is an important thing, and I think having, you know, a lot of times when these transactions, a lot of the ground is shifted under downtown in terms of where property lines are, where easements are, where right-of-ways are. And I think the more clarity that we can provide to individuals who are buying property or who may own property in the future, the better, and that's why I'll be supporting the resolution in front of us.
Councilmember Evans?
As mentioned, there's some other ones that are apparently going to come back to the council, and I, I guess you could lump these two together, but the only reason, the cost of this right-of-way, setting the right-of-way, the survey work and everything is, is very expensive. And granted, this is going to be in place for 40 years, but, but we're in the process of negotiations on these properties right now that I think we need to get this resolved because it could be unresolved, or it could potentially have legal issues, surveying issues, location issues in the future. I think it's, let's get it done, and then when the other ones come up, we can do those too. I just don't want to take the risk of creating more work for staff and creating costs to the city if, for some reason, somebody questions some of these right-of-ways, and I think it's just good to get it done.
Any further comments? All right, seeing none, the motion was made by councilmember Lamb, seconded by councilmember Evans. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Steve, thank you so much for your presentation this evening. Next on the agenda is AB 15194, with Steve again, actually. Consider Approval of a Memorandum of Understanding with King County Library System Regarding Associated Easements and Transactions. And hopefully, all of you saw in your folder on the dais tonight, we actually have some additional information. Steve?
Thank you again. So this agenda bill focuses on the city's coordination efforts with King County Library System, specifically working with them to ensure mutual benefit as the results of efforts of their downtown revitalization. So on the overhead we have here, this is the library parcel. This is 98th, north is up, and 182nd is coming this way. This is the old Dawson Building. So that's kind of the frame of reference. The aerial kind of shows the old driveway, and I'm pointing some of these out because this will come up later. This is the old driveway that used to be. There's now a new driveway that's coming in this way. And there's also, I'm sure people know, you can't really tell here, but there's kind of a rockery here and kind of a green swale here in the north end of the parking lot. So the city has been working with King County Library since the Horse Creek project was in design, and we entered into a memorandum of understanding previously with them to work out the details, to do a few things. One was to obtain property and easements that were necessary to facilitate the Horse Creek project. And then the other was to potentially swap some of the Dawson property land with them for some of their land on the northern edge to potentially put a roadway between 98th and 96th. So with the Horse Creek project, we obtained the necessary permanent easements and right-of-way, and we compensated them with the difference in cash, about $300,000. And one of the things that we also put in there was six parking stalls on the Dawson property in the interim, because we were, we didn't want to hold up the Horse Creek project, and that was a way for us to move forward with the memorandum of understanding and resolve everything at a later time. So this is a later time, and we have resolved it. You did get the updated memorandum of understanding and easement. We just basically closed the deal finally with a few, couple minor changes, which I'll talk about yesterday. So the easement itself, this is what the city wants. Get that on. So same thing, this is the library parcel, 98th, 182nd. This is the north end with the swale and the rockery. And we want a 30-foot easement there. We started off looking at a roadway, which would have been at least about 53 feet wide. Because of the grade differences right around here, we would have to build a big wall, storm drain system. We would have really impacted the library. We would have had to replace the parking. We would have had to trade a lot of land in the Dawson parcel in order to do that. So it was becoming really expensive. So the solution we came up with is, we still wanted a corridor, a public corridor, especially for the library, and a pedestrian corridor was kind of the solution. So this easement would allow us to put a pedestrian corridor on the north side. We would use either the existing rockery or replace that rockery, and we could kind of, if you look at the rockery, it goes from the high elevation and works its way down until it's level with 98th Avenue, so it works pretty well. It also gives us a few more feet to put a couple utilities in there if we needed for developers to, on the north side as well, which is what the roadway would have done as well. And the good thing is, we're not impacting the existing parking of the library. So that kind of keeps the land trade low, and it keeps our costs in fixing their parking lot low as well. So what the library wanted, so same thing, 182nd here, 98th on this side, north is up. This is the borderline between King County parcel and the Dawson parcel. And what their library really wanted was a second entrance, because once we sell the Dawson building, their second entrance goes away. And it was a hard time because there's mechanisms involved. As, as, as an example, if we gave them and paid them money, their facilities wouldn't get the money to go into the general fund, and then that library wouldn't get the second entrance. So we're actually going to trade, and we're going to build six stalls, and we're going to build a driveway for them. And we have to provide a little bit of our land, about 10 feet up to this point, five feet here, for the required landscape buffer that's going to be required with the parking lot. If we have money to the equivalent value of the six stalls, we owe them on this lot, which they're going to vacate, and the 30-foot easement, we would do additional landscaping or maybe even put the sidewalk in there. But we're going to approach the equivalent value from below, because they can't give us any money, and we don't want to give them any more money than the equivalent value. So that's kind of the agreement that we came up with, and that's what's laid out in front of you. The changes that came up in the last minute were a couple of things. We went back and forth with the 30-foot easement to make sure we understand what each could do in that area, and it was a little complicated. We want them to, to be able to allow them to maintain their swale, but we don't want them to be able to build a structure or plant trees or anything. They want to maintain vegetation, even if it's bushes, and if they wanted to extend, you know, like their parking lot or something, they probably could do that. Anything that wouldn't necessarily prevent us from putting underground utilities or the pedestrian sidewalk there. So that was part of the changes that you saw in the, the new documents. The last one was on the 98th entrance, which I'll show here. And I'm going to orient that the same way. So this is 98th going north, the library is down here, and this is the new intersection with their new entrance, and you have to kind of take a left turn in. So Horse Creek is building that entrance for them, and we, there, there are some issues. Some of the cars are having a hard time going in. We could attribute some of that to just being under construction. But they also have to take kind of a left turn. So there are some curb adjustments that we are going to do around that area, and they wanted us to include it in this memorandum, in the memorandum of understanding. And we're doing this with the Horse Creek project. It's probably under order of about $15,000. It's not a huge deal. It's already, you know, we have enough money in the Horse Creek budget to do that. But they wanted, again, to be in writing in the MOU. So that's the other change that's on the document that, between what you got in your packet and today. That being said, you know, I think we've worked hard together to try to come up with something that works for the library in the long run, to get their second entrance, they maintain their parking, they get an entrance that works well. And on the other hand, we get a free and clear Dawson building to sell, as well as potential utility corridor and potential pedestrian corridor. So I can respond to any questions you might.
Great, thank you, Steve. Anybody have questions? Councilmember Evans?
If there's no questions, I'd move the recommended action.
We have a motion by councilmember Evans, seconded by councilmember Sandberg. Any conversation, discussion? Councilmember Sandberg?
Thank you for the thorough presentation.
Thanks.
Made it really clear.
Yeah. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, motion made by councilmember Evans, seconded by councilmember Sandberg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. So that-
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to extend the meeting until- Mr. Mayor, I'd move to extend the meeting until 10 o'clock.
I, actually, before we take that motion, I looked to the city attorney. How much time do we expect in executive session?
I think it would be prudent to extend the meeting in keeping with the motion. I think we'll need at least 15 minutes in the executive session, and then there will be a possibility of some action following that.
There will be?
Yep.
Okay. So 10 o'clock? Any discussion?
And then I also had that, we added the added item at the end regarding the December 10th memo.
Yeah, we were going to have that right before executive session, so we'll have it right now.
Okay.
All in favor of extending to 10, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. So we'll take up the item that was brought up by Councilmember Sandberg, the memo regarding the lobbyist. Have specific questions or...
So the city manager sent us a memo on December 10th talking about the potential of us, the city being on the bubble for Model Toxic Control Act remediation funds. And so there is the possibility that we may not receive MACHTA funds to help with the environmental cleanup, and I think I heard you say that's to the tune of like $6 million. So the questions I had were, number one, what is the cost of hiring a lobbyist to promote our interest in Olympia? And then, is the, is the project ranking changeable? I mean, we're currently 16th and 17th on the funding list. It seems like, if that's not changeable, then is, what is hiring a lobbyist going to achieve for us if we can't change our ranking? And then, if we don't receive the MACHTA funds, what is our Plan B? I mean, we were talking about using $6 million, I think it was $6 million, $6 million to complete, no, that was, that was the grant that we got from the TIV. We were talking about using $4 million to match the TIV grant to complete the multiway boulevard. If we don't have the MACHTA funding, and as you stated here, our downtown revitalization efforts could stop, what is our contingency plan?
So three questions. The first question is, we anticipate spending less than $40,000 for the environmental lobbyist. The second question, whether or not you can change ranking? Yes. If you remember, in the memorandum, I indicate that we actually had a higher ranking, but through the legislative approval process, other projects were propelled above ours. And so, in essence, that is what we'll be asking our legislature to do, is to specifically find funding with, whether it's within MACHCA or some other funding account in order to complete the job that we started in partnership with the Department of Ecology. And the third question is regards to, if we don't receive the $5.6 million that we are seeking now from Ecology or from the state, we will need to reprioritize some of our other capital projects in order to move forward with those blocks in downtown. And those blocks include, at this point, Block P, EF&amp;G, and Block D.
And Block D is where our specialty grocer is hopefully coming.
That's correct. Specialty grocer on Block D as an anchor, and then drugstore as an anchor on the opposite side of the street, which is Block EF&amp;G.
So I imagine we'll be discussing this again in January about what are, you know, maybe what the outcomes of lobbying efforts?
Yes. You'll be discussing it very soon in January as we form, as the council forms its legislative priorities, and I would imagine, and certainly would propose, that this be one of your top priorities during the 60-day short session that's going to be starting in January of 2016.
So you said that you felt like we could change our ranking, we could, we could move up in the ranking with lobbying efforts, or you, we would get, we would have to find more money from the legislature?
Could be a combination of both. Certainly, that is how, that is what has happened in past legislative sessions. There is a natural competitive process that Department of Ecology would rank projects, but through the legislative approval process, certain projects can get propelled above others that are not necessarily consistent with that competitive ranking.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So council is going to be going into executive session. Do we expect to come back after or not?
It is my hope that you will come back and take action following, and this will be with regard to pending litigation.
Okay, so council will be in executive session for approximately 20 minutes for litigation matters. It's weird, yeah. Okay, council is back from their executive session. I'd like to turn the floor over to Councilmember Lamb.
So I would move that we authorize the city attorney to pay outstanding legal fees on the growth management hearings for matter, and to pay them until such time as new council can give direction.
Second, any discussion?
Does the maker of the motion want to speak to the motion?
Sure. Well, I'll let others speak, and then I'll speak to my motion.
Typically, the maker of the motion speaks first.
Do you wish to speak?
I do wish to speak, but I'd like to hear what the maker, why the maker of the motion is making the motion.
Well, the wonderful thing about a council is you have the opportunity to speak when you want to speak and not be told to speak. So if you want to have the opportunity, you certainly can. The Councilmember Lamb can speak when he wishes to, as well as Councilmember Raym or anyone else. So it sounds like Councilmember Lamb...
Or we can move to a vote.
Wait, yeah, or we can vote.
It's interesting how the conversation can be controlled. So in this unusual circumstance, when the maker of the motion would like to respond to what I would like to say, I will give him that opportunity and say that what has happened is that the council, the majority of council, approved spending no more than $50,000 to defend the city in a growth management hearings decision. A growth management hearings decision that ruled against the city. The city lost, and the majority in the council voted to spend $50,000 to appeal that decision. And now we have to authorize more. And what's interesting in the making of the motion is that it is an open check. There is no maximum amount of what this final bill will be until January. But what was discussed was the potential for 20 additional, $20,000 additional dollars. So when you add 50,000... So when you add $50,000 plus $20,000 plus $42,000 for a best available science study to support this appeal, again, in a decision that the city lost, we are spending, interestingly enough, more than the $107,000 that we're collecting from our 1% property tax increase. So I will absolutely be voting no on this motion. And I would just like to point out that our property taxes, the citizens' property taxes, were raised 1% to cover the cost of a legal battle that we should have never gotten into in the first place, to benefit very few property owners, one of which who is sitting on council now, and his legal representation, who is also sitting on council.
I voted against the property tax, just like you did, but it wasn't specifically tied to any one item. But you mentioned the numbers, but just want to mention the property tax again. Councilmember Raym, do you wish to speak to this at all? Anyone on this side? Councilmember Evans?
Sure. It's interesting, sitting on this council and listening to all the residents and neighborhoods in the city come and express their concerns and things. But we have a neighborhood here who's expressed concerns, but virtually is getting no consideration whatsoever. And I'm willing to take completely out of that equation, because I probably won't be here when those decisions are made. But so it's interesting to me, what is driving this, or who is driving this? And the bottom line is, we wouldn't be spending upwards of $100,000 or whatever you just mentioned had the initial appeal never occurred. That's where it first started, when we spent money on that. Do you want to speak to the rest of the council, Councilmember Sandberg?
I would, if I had the opportunity to respond.
Sure. Fire away. Fire away.
So if we had made certain compromises during the comprehensive land use changes for the Fitzgerald sub area, if we had made certain compromises, instead of wholesale changing it to the benefit of development, we probably wouldn't have been in this appeal process. But there were no compromises made. And because there were no compromises made during the comprehensive plan change process, that triggered the appeal. And yes, there was an appeal, but the Growth Management Hearings Board heard in favor of the appellant. So I think this should be a lesson in how we should legislate up there, up here, and make compromises so that we don't trigger appeals in the future, and we don't trigger these expensive legal processes.
Well, and as far as...
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to continue until 10:10.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, just very quickly...
We have to quick on extending. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Floor is yours again.
So very quickly, as far as, you know, there certainly is a question of the ordinance that was appealed as being worse than the original ordinance. And I don't know how that, I'm not sure that that is true. For one thing, the current DOE manual, or if you go back to the original ordinance, 2005, that ordinance is not as prohibitive as the new DOE manual is that we approved in this. Just that one item alone makes it a better proposal. So we did compromise. And some of the other things, we talked about things, I don't recall if there are how many compromises there were or not. But, you know, it's just, I don't know what it is about this issue. And my hunch is, it has nothing to do with the issue. It has to do with the people on this council, that they just cannot stand the people on this council, and so they're going to vote against this issue regardless of what. And so...
I totally disagree. There were issues like tree retention, grading, impervious surface coverage limits, all of those things that could have been issues of compromise.
Tree retention went from 50% to 40%, 10%.
And we can argue...
Yeah, we can debate this forever.
We can argue what happened in that comprehensive plan process, but there were compromises that could have been made that could have prevented an appeal in the first place.
I really, when the first ordinance was appealed, what makes you think this ordinance would have been appealed if there had been compromises? In fact, we had a member of the public stand up and say, well, I'm okay to bring back ordinance 1830 or whatever it was, but I think we'd want to make some changes even to that ordinance. There's no guarantee in my mind that this ordinance would have ever been passed by the public.
And what we should have done is, after we lost the appeal, gone back to the drawing board legislatively and fixed the Fitzgerald sub area.
Yeah, whatever.
I don't know that you're ever going to get anywhere on that. So Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Spivey?
Great. Thank you, Mayor. I'll be supporting this motion because we have outstanding bills. And when you work with attorneys, you just don't know what size of the bill you're going to have based off of the work that they've done. We find ourselves in that situation where more work was done than anticipated. And so the work was done, we got to pay our bills. And there's also the fact that we have to be able to preserve certain rights as far as having the work done to a point of being in a position that it's a logical point to stop. So we're not, we're just doing our due diligence to maintain our legal case by, one, paying the bills for the work that's been done, and having the work continue to a logical stopping point so that the council next year can readdress the issue. As far as, you know, the other discussion that's gone up here, the reason why there are appeals, because sometimes decisions aren't right, and that's why there's appeals to right wrongs. And to think that we should just accept a decision just because a decision was made, that's not, no, that's why we have appeals, is to right wrongs. And so I will be supporting this, and I, just like anything else, we got to pay our bills. So that's why I'm supporting it.
Yep. Councilmember Raym?
I'm really curious about the maker of the motion's explanation to why we aren't using the limit that was given to us, recommended to us by staff. I do have some other things I'd like to say, but I just would like to know the answer to that, if possible. If you don't want to answer that question, I'll just rattle on.
Happy to answer it during my time.
Can I yield the floor?
Who are you going to yield the floor to?
To Councilmember Lamb.
So can you repeat your question?
I'm just curious to, the staff recommendation was to put a limit on it to $20,000 of an extension to the contract. And I was just curious to why that wasn't part of the motion.
I don't really discuss things in executive session that come out to, into this. I mean, our standard practice is we don't discuss executive session matters in public session.
I thought the city attorney told us...
I guess I would say, you know, originally, when we first got the quote for Horse Creek, it was $6 million, and it's grown pretty dramatically since then. And I voted, even though I didn't originally, wasn't enthusiastic about the project, I voted to fund it because we were underway. I think sometimes, both in stormwater and in the law and in other matters of municipal government, when you begin something, your budget expands. It happened with Horse Creek, it's happened with this litigation. And as Councilmember, as Deputy Mayor Spivey said, we have a bill that's outstanding. We have a bill for work that's been done as of tonight that needs to be paid. So I think a vote against this is saying the city of Bothell doesn't want to pay its bills.
Floor is yours.
So I'm not going to support the motion. I wanted this to be discussed on the January 5th council meeting for a reason, and that's because I think the potential for maybe a redirection of the council is there. We're having a new council come into office in January, and, you know, having basically just an open-ended check to go ahead and spend as much as you can until that time comes, I think, is inappropriate. And kind of on a global statement about this whole appeal, I think there's a better way of making legislation that could have worked for everybody. I know this area has been the topic of legislation for many years in the city, and there's been many changes from what it originally was to what it is, what it was proposed to be that was challenged, and the appeal was upheld at the Growth Management Hearing Board. So I'm not going to support this motion.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Lamb?
So we have before us a situation where we have a bill that needs to be paid. With respect to the appeal itself, the original regulations that Councilmember Raym just alluded to were appealed by Ms. Egard to the Growth Management Hearing Board, and she lost. And the original regulations were upheld. The composition of the Growth Management Hearing Board then changed. There were additional modifications made to it. Ms. Egard appealed again, and it went up to the Growth Management Hearing Board, and in this instance, Ms. Egard prevailed. I don't have anything negative to say about Councilmember Sandberg. I don't have anything to critique in what she said, other than I think when the city of Bothell incurs a bill, we should pay it. And I think that in the new year, when a new council looks at this, I would encourage you not to fixate solely on the issues involved with the Fitzgerald sub area, but rather some of the precedential values of what it says about the ability of municipal governments to make their own land use decisions, whether they be more restrictive or more permissive in the, you know, realm of regulation. Sometimes you can wish for something and say, I would like to have, you know, I think this decision is so bad, and I think we just need to drop this appeal immediately. And you might find years later that there are some precedents that are set by doing that that come back to work against you. I think it is important that people at the local level, through their elected representatives, and we've had an election in this city, may very well change the direction of our council, that those are the people who make policy, not unelected politicians who are appointed by other politicians. That's an important principle, and I think that's the principled that's at stake with appeal. Whether or not you agree with the individuals, I would encourage a new council to listen to their legal counsel and to understand the issues before they take action. And all this is doing is saying that we're going to pay the bills that we've incurred, and we're going to be able to have our council be up to speed on that. But I didn't want to speak last to say anything negative about anybody. I have respect for everybody on this council, and I think we're at our best when we assume the best about one another.
Everybody's had the chance to speak. We have a motion and a second. So rather than open it up to another round, which I don't know that we need, no, ask for a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
So passes four to two. So that brings us to the last item on our agenda tonight. Is there anything else for the good of the cause?
No.
No. Well, it's been quite a year. This is the last year of our council meeting. It's been an honor to serve as mayor. An interesting year, but a good couple of years and a good 10 years so far. I look forward to the future of Bothell and all that is in store. I wish everybody a wonderful Merry Christmas. I got a text from my wife tonight. We have a couple of Latvian girls with us for Christmas, and she was talking about how she was braiding one of the girls' hair and eating popcorn. It just reminded me of the small things that we should each celebrate over the next few weeks as we're together with friends and family. So bless you all. Good night.